My name is Jason Perro, Chairman of the Northborough Board of Selectmen and I call it the order this Monday, November ninth, two thousand twenty meeting of the board. First order of business would be for me to go through the preliminary matter which we do before all of our remote meetings. So if you'll just bear with me for a moment. This open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which is posted at the top of our agenda allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. So that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public participation in the form of public comment. Meeting is being convened by the Zoom application as posted on the town's website. On the posted agenda, you will find links that will allow you to join the Zoom webinar either by application or by phone. You can find access to view this meeting through the YouTube video streaming. You also have access via local cable access channels, Verizon Channel thirty, Charter Channel one ninety-two. And that should provide access for anyone who wishes to observe the meeting or participate in the meeting. As far as the ground rules of the meeting, I'm sorry, let me just back up for a moment. Participants to the meeting, please be aware that the meeting is being recorded. You are in view on video. While you are not participating, you may wish to mute your audio so as not to intrude. Please do not screen share unless you're asked to. Anything you broadcast will be captured by the recording. The ground rules for the meeting. I, as the chair, will walk through the agenda and invite each presenter for each item to make their presentation. After they conclude, I will invite the comments, questions, or motions from the members of the board. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your microphone when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor. If you wish to engage in colloquy with other members of the board, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. I will review the requirements for the procedure for public comment when we reach that item on the agenda. And I'll note that because this is a remotely conducted meeting, each vote will be taken by roll call. Moment, I think that takes care of those preliminaries and I just want to walk through the participants at this point to acknowledge who's here and to ensure that they have audio access. When I call your name, please unmute yourself and acknowledge by voice. I am Jason Perro, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Tim Kalen, Vice Chair.
Present.
Leslie Ratan, Clerk.
Present.
Julianne Hirsch.
Present.
And Scott Rogers.
Good evening, present.
We also have Town Administrator John Codere.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
Present.
We have our Health Agent Kristen Black.
Present.
We have our Director of Public Works, Scott Sharpentier.
Present.
And we have our Chief of Police, William Liver.
Present.
And our Fire Chief David Parenti, who is also our Technology Expert assisting with us tonight to conduct the meeting.
Present. Be careful with that technology expert stuff.
Yes. Additionally, we have our support staff from Northborough Cable Access who is connected to the meeting and recording it for public viewing. With that, I think we can begin to proceed with the agenda. First item of business is the approval of the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Leslie.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty meeting minutes.
Second.
Moved by Leslie Ratan, seconded by Tim Kalen. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
Tim Kalen.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, also vote ayes. Approval of minutes carries unanimously. It's now past the hour of seven o'clock and we have Kristen Black, our Health Agent for COVID nineteen update. Welcome, Kristen. You've muted?
Yep. Thank you very much, everybody. If I cast your permission, I'd like to share a presentation.
Yes, please.
All right. Okay, I hope everyone can see that okay.
Sure. Kristen, I don't know if it's part of your presentation, but you could also introduce yourself here a little bit if you'd like. Yep.
Okay, sure. Thank you very much. My name's Kristen Black. I just joined Northborough about three weeks ago or so. It was October thirteenth. And I'm really excited to be here. I came from the town of Uxbridge where I served as their Health Agent and Director for the last five years. My background's more in environmental health and I've been dealing with the COVID pandemic and in Uxbridge and I've learned a lot in a short amount of time and I'm excited to be here to support your community through this difficult time. So it's been a very welcome. Everyone's been very warm and welcoming and there's a great staff here. So I'm excited to be here today. So a lot's changed with COVID. I think even as a professional who's working with this every day, I'm struggling to keep up with the changing rules. I think we all know and we're hearing about the surge and people really want to know what's happening in our community. In the state, you know, what are all these new orders that happened last week? So hopefully this brief presentation will answer some of those questions. We do have this presentation is available on the town's website. There's a COVID page. So if you go anywhere. The town pages, there's a red banner at the top. If you click on that, on the COVID nineteen webpage on the left, I uploaded this presentation for you to view as well. So today I'm going to briefly cover just the new state orders and advisories that came out Fast and Furious last week. I think you heard about many of them. They were announced, I believe, on Wednesday. They came effective on Friday. And there were even some more updates from the governor on the metrics and things like that that came out. So I'll cover those updates. We'll talk about the recent changes to our Northborough COVID webpage. I'll talk about this risk status map where everyone's hearing we're red, we're yellow, what color are we? And we'll talk a little bit about my relationship and how the Health Department's working with the schools, a little bit about wireless emergency alerts that you may have heard of. If anyone received a call last week on Thursday, there's some statewide calls and we'll talk a little bit about our business outreach plan. So there's really some key orders and advisories that came out very quickly last week. You may have heard about the stay-at-home advisory. Let's get into the early closure of business advisory revised gathering order. The revised face covering order and some other ones that are hot topics for a lot of families in town is there were some major changes to the youth. And adult amateur sports activities. So you'll hear about teams no longer being able to travel to other states or having to wear a mask now all the time during active play. So those are some other updates. I won't get into too many details, but that's another one you may hear about and also a little bit about the recommendations for Thanksgiving that came from the state. And again, all of these are orders from the state. The town of Northborough, the Health Department have not passed any local regulations, orders around COVID at this time. So briefly, just to cover the stay-at-home advisory here. It's important to note it began on Friday morning that all residents are advised to stay home between the hours of ten PM and five AM. And so residents are allowed to leave their home during those hours, but only for this small subset of activities. Going to work, seeking emergency medical care, going to the pharmacy, receiving a delivery, going to school, the grocery store, or picking up takeout food. So what's really important, what the state's looking for is that people are not hosting gatherings and parties. Everyone should return to their household at ten PM. Unless they're completing any of these activities here. The next major order is the early closure of businesses and other activities. This is COVID order number fifty-three in the presentation. These are all hyperlink. So you should be able to see the signed governor orders. So it's important to note that certain businesses and activities are required to cease at nine thirty. And the reason for that is that we're looking at, by those businesses closing, it will help our residents get home to meet that ten PM stay-at-home order. And those two things together is what's going to help us limit the spread of COVID nineteen right now. Businesses that, you know, are most familiar to many of you that you'd know would be restaurants are going to close nine thirty, gyms, fitness centers, movie theaters, and there's a whole long list. Again, if you go directly to that order, one of the things we'll cover with some of the planned business outreach are the nuances and, you know, how is this applied exactly? Like we just received clarification on Friday that you can, as long as you sit in a restaurant and order and are served food by nine thirty. You can finish your meal up until ten o'clock, but what they don't want to see is someone walk through the door at nine thirty to sit down. The goal is again to get everybody home for ten PM. This revised gathering order number fifty-four, it's really, there's two parts to it. The image on the left, these are just screenshots from some of the one-page flyers from the state. It's really specific to events and venues. And so it's very specific as to if you're in a high or a low-risk community, if you're indoors or outdoors. So there's a lot of detail there, but it's important with any gathering you're going to, whether it's indoors or outdoors. Like a formal gathering by a business, face covering should be required at all times, social distancing of attendees. And again, everyone must disperse by nine thirty. And so one new addition, we'll be working with businesses. If they are planning an event that exceeds five hundred people, that they would notify the Board of Health. And that way, if we were to become a high-risk community, we'd be able to work with them to alert them that in fact maybe they need to change their numbers. What a lot of people don't know, this is a, this is a game changer for how we, you know, pre-COVID, what we did. But in private residence, we have to limit our indoor gatherings to no more than ten. So that's the people that are together. In the house, and this is again for private residents and outside is no more than twenty-five. And again, it's about spacing that six feet. And they're also asking, you know, that people would wear masks when they're not part of the same household. And there's, there's ten, ten people present. Next is the COVID or the revised face covering order, which is COVID order number fifty-five. This didn't change all too much. Obviously, there's the, the state put out a face covering order very early on. We got used to it, but it was all about six feet and social distancing. So it was always about, you know, when you're out in public, wear a mask if you can't maintain six feet of distance. This order really removed that social distancing component and now it's, you're wearing a mask all the time. Again, you know, this is for ages five and up. There is still a medical exemption in here. It does clarify that face coverings are required if you're in a vehicle with non-household members. And I just, I've been back and forth with DPW and other people with question, what is a public place? And so a public location on the right here, this was cut right out of the order. It's any place that's open to the public, including without limitation, grocery stores, pharmacies, other retail stores, public transportation, other ride-sharing vehicles. Public streets and ways and any other location that hosts indoor/outdoor events. I just want to point out that there are some exemptions to this. So for example, if you work in an office setting. You would think of that as a public place, right? You know, maybe your entrance is public. But if you're in the office, you're in a back area where the public isn't coming in and out like a retail store. There's other guidelines those types of businesses are going to follow. For example, there's an office space guideline or standard. So there is an exemption that says if there's industry or sector-specific guidelines for that business or that type of business that they would defer to them. So little nuances here. That's why we're planning on holding some business outreach. So businesses know how all these orders and standards and protocols are layered. Some, again, some other updates from the state. Again, I mentioned earlier, some major changes to youth and adult amateur sports activities. Again, you know, you're going to see face masks all the time during active play with some exemptions of like swimming, for example, and, and clear requirements about whether states and inter-team travel across state lines. And the state has also put out some recommendations for Thanksgiving. Here's a little image, a nice graphic. You can see all the detail. We have a link on our COVID webpage with those Thanksgiving recommendations from the state. So again, it's reiterating the updated face covering order, the gathering order, and then the basic hygiene and social distancing protocols we've been hearing all along. So we revamped our, our town COVID nineteen webpage. Nothing really disappeared. We just sort of rearranged things to make it a little clearer for the public. We added a few tabs. There's a screenshot on the right here. We made a tab that's just specific to case counts. A lot of people want to know, what are your numbers? And it has links to both the state's dashboards. The school has their own dashboard where they're tracking the number of cases in the school. So we sort of put all those links in one place on that COVID case count webpage. We also added a COVID nineteen testing link there. A lot of people keep asking, you know, where's my local place? What's free? What, what are the differences between tests? And so we urge residents to review that testing webpage for some additional information. And again, I want to reiterate that our source of, the numbers we're putting out here, the case, the source is from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. COVID nineteen weekly public health report. This comes out, it was every Wednesday. Now it's every Thursday. And last week it was delayed and it came out on Friday. But what we're trying to do is, you know, we're, we're six months into a pandemic and I know people want the numbers that day. And I can run reports and I am a, you know, authorized user, but it causes a lot of confusion if you run the reports because there's always little discrepancies. Like a case comes in and it shows up as a Northborough case. It's on our case count. And then after they start the case investigation, for example, they realize that person actually doesn't live in Northborough. They listed their old address on the form. And then they get moved out. So we're going to see these small fluctuations in numbers. You know, other things that they find there's a duplication. So just realize, you know, if you see a number from a week or two, change a number or two. There are explanations. We're not making this stuff up, but when you run these reports. You know, it depends on the date you run it. As we all know, you might get a COVID test on a Wednesday. Some people get the result the next day. Well, that gets reported then. But if you get a test on a Wednesday and the results don't come back till Monday. When we pull a report for all the cases through Sunday, that won't appear, but then it will maybe retroactively appear the next week. So there's, just be aware. So we also have line cohort and age cohort graphs that are new that we added to the website. A lot of residents say, well, oh, this is a disease, you know, this is an infection. It's only affecting eight-year-olds. It's, you know, it's, it's not me or, or it's just all the kids. And I think you find this week's or last week's age cohort that's up there. I think we had eight cases, people in their fifties. So the greater majority was fifty-year-olds in town. So there's going to be changes and that kind of information's also available at the state level. We do have the line graph that's just showing our cases over time. I'll get into that. And we have our information consolidated into really two pages of business webpage, so resources for businesses. And that will be sort of their reopening guidelines, their standards, other links for them versus the resident webpages, which might be, you know, links for the schools or local resources or food insecurity or those sort of things. And again, I mentioned that we had an out-of-state travel webpage here. I think you've all heard. I think just the big news this week is California went red. And what are the roles? In the Health Office, we're feeling a lot of questions about how that travel order works. And so some, some of those questions, frequently asked questions, you'll find answered on the out-of-state travel page. So again, I mentioned we're doing the line graph. So this is the line graph. I'm, I'm producing these graphs sort of the day of the report's release or the day after, depending how late the state report comes out. So we all remember the, the wild peak we saw in April and, and it's nice to see it on a line graph. So you can say, where are we relative to where we were before? And I could tell you, I'll cover later on the slide where we are ticking up. So you could see two weeks ago, we were at fifteen this last week. And the ending on the October thirty-first, we had eight cases and, and we are creeping a little bit back up. So look at that over time. And this is the age cohort graph I mentioned. Again, I'm producing this each week. I'm uploading it and you can just see the trends. And this is following that same two-week average of the state's report. And again, the big thing we keep hearing and we did so much work to try to explain and get ready because we went red. That report was released on October twenty-ninth. And we all panicked and said, what does this mean for businesses? And we really were working hard at the town level on our outreach and understanding it. And so again, that's about whether or not you're high, moderate, or low risk. So we were either low or moderate. And again, just on October twenty-ninth, we went red. And so that, you know, you're a red community if you're stuck in the red for three consecutive weeks. So although we were red on the October twenty-ninth report, we're not considered higher risk. So to be higher risk, you need to be red consistently for three weeks. And then the state just changed their metrics on Friday. They announced it in those risk metrics from eleven-sixth. That when they published it, they did downgrade us to moderate risk. So we'll get too much into the nitty-gritty here. If you have questions. I'm happy to try to answer those for you offline. So again, with the updated metrics, I just want you to notice the circle on the right or the oval. Sorry, trying to, we're in the population of the ten thousand to fifty thousand. But for us to be red, we have to have over ten average cases. Over two-week period per hundred thousand and a five percent positivity rate. So that highlighted section is totally new. That five percent positivity rate is the test, the COVID nineteen test positivity rate. So if a hundred people go and get a COVID nineteen test, five or more need to test positive for us to hit that rate. And one thing to note, we've had a pretty low test positivity rate in Northborough. I think in this past week, I'll cover in the next slide, we're more in the one and a half range. Or we've been mostly below one through the summer. So that's a pretty high threshold to get us to that five percent range. I don't see that happening all too soon. That number of cases we would need, and I want you to note that that category for red is an and, not an or. I think we're around twenty cases. The state's, I believe, changing how they're calculating our population. So we're waiting on that, but we'd need both to go red moving forward. And also the guidance for the school was updated on Friday. This was big news. A lot of people, teachers, schools are trying to digest this and understand it. So Desi's guidelines came out and they said schools that are gray, green, or yellow should have students learning fully in person. But they do preface that with when logistically possible. And they do say that schools in red don't mean they, you know, they don't expect those to close. They want those red communities to be in a hybrid system. And with the state's revised metrics, we only have sixteen cities and towns in the red now. More of the cities, the Revere, Chelsea, Lynn, et cetera, that we've been seeing all along with higher rates. And again, the Desi guideline saying that fully remote instruction model should be implemented only as a last resort. So here are most recent case counts. This is from the report that was published on eleven-sixth. But just note the period for reporting is really that two-week period up until October thirty-first. So you could see that here in yellow is and yellow is our average incidence rate. So how many cases do we have in the last fourteen days? And then our percent positivity, which is the second to the last column, we're at one point four percent. So again, to go red, we'd have to go all the way up to five percent. So the good news for us is we have great testing in our area. There's a lot of places for people to go to stop the spread sites. That you may have heard about, located conveniently in Marlboro, Worcester, Framingham. Those have been extended through at least January fifteenth. So with good access to testing, we're hoping those percent positivity will be low and we'll just hope for low transmission in our community. This is concerning. This was just today. And I think if anyone's listening to the news, you're hearing Massachusetts rates are really jumping. So while we're seeing a small uptick in the town of Northborough statewide, you can see there were today, new daily confirmed cases was one thousand one hundred and eighty-four. We haven't seen numbers like that for daily new cases in Massachusetts until back in May. So this is clearly a new surge, a new uptick. We all need to be very aware of. And just briefly, some coordination with the schools. I've had the pleasure of working with the medical advisory team. I think many of you may be aware that they formed a medical advisory team with some incredible talented medical professionals in our area. We have multiple doctors with backgrounds in infectious disease, et cetera. I wish I could list all their credentials. It's really amazing. It's been a great cooperative group. They meet weekly. They've involved both the Health Department and both Southborough and Northborough. And we really look at the data. We talk about what's available. They're starting a whole campaign to improve the testing for the teachers. So I'm just wowed by that relationship and that they formed that in town. I think we're really fortunate to have those professionals offering their time and expertise for the schools to make these decisions. Again, I briefly covered these wireless emergency alerts. So if you get a random phone call, like the one you received from Commissioner Barrell on Thursday, if any of you received that. Those are coming from the state. As you know, Northborough has a code-red system where we can do notifications, but we typically reserve that. Or I'll let the chief chime in or either chief or the town administrator for real critical urgent items. So at this time, we're not issuing messages locally. But the state, if we were to become red, the state has a whole program where they come in, use satellites, and they issue these automatic messages. So for example, I've heard from individuals, I drove into a red community and I got this scary eat, eat, eat like on my phone with, be careful, stay home. You know, I, you know, I don't know the details of messages, but just be aware they're out there. The state's doing this to try to make residents aware. And that's not something we're doing locally at this time. And lastly, with the business outreach, businesses are struggling to keep up with the rules. You know, again, I'm a health professional. I'm doing it every day. I'm struggling to keep up with the rules. Many of these rules layer. And so for example, you could be an establishment. Let's think of a place that's an indoor sports complex. And, and then you have separate restaurant guidelines on top of it. And if you hold the jamboree on a Saturday, make sure you're following the event standards on top of that. So one business, you know, there's not just one size fits all, but the Health Departments here is a resource to help connect with. We can ask questions. Health Departments have been very well supported and networked with the state. I'm on three training statewide calls to keep up to date with the rules. So we can answer those business-specific questions. And just some summary points for all of you. I think, you know, as a town, Northborough has been fairly, you know, faring very well. I think people have been respectful to it. It's, I'm going to steal the Mary Ellen Duggan, who is our Wellness Coordinator with the schools, has been great. And her signature says, be safe, be smart, do our part. I, I think we all want to keep our kids in school. We want to be able to keep businesses open and, and we want our residents healthy and safe. So wear a mask in public, follow that new order, spread the word, follow the new stay-at-home advisory that's in place from ten PM to five, five AM every night. Again, limiting social gatherings in your home. There is that gathering order. Details are again on our website. You know, you shouldn't be having gatherings inside your house, especially in these winter months with over ten individuals. And so we also want you, everybody to obviously monitor for symptoms and seat testing. And so I like this graphic on the right from the CDC. You know, it's about making choices, especially as we get into the winter season and what's risky and what's lower risk. And you really have to strike a balance that's right for you and your family and keeping in mind our community. And so lastly, I just want to open things up for questions and point you to, or again, here's the hyperlink for the webpage address. The webpage address for our COVID webpage for the town of Northborough. Also, the state's website has all the links as well to CDC for the Center for Disease Control. You can see all the state's case counts, which are updated daily. Um, a lot of people, um, general questions, you can call two one one, they also have a live chat and can answer questions about. Everything from food insecurity to where do I get a COVID test, is this a COVID symptom, I don't have a doctor, who do I call? Um, those sort of things, and again, lastly, we just wanna put a push out there for businesses that they can cover, call the health department. If they have questions and concerns and, um, to encourage those businesses to, um, reach out to our department. As we'll be, uh, advertising an upcoming webinar for them. That's all I have, so thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Kristen, it's, uh, kind of an understatement to say that, that's all you have. Because this has been really quite a very comprehensive and, uh, very informative, uh, presentation for all of us, I'm sure. Um, to have all this information collected together and, uh, summarized so, uh, so effectively here. Um, board members, uh, do you have any questions? Um, I'm sorry, Kristen, could you stop sharing? And I'll be able to get a better view of the room here. Uh, I'm sorry, could I ask that again, any questions from, uh, board members? Uh, Leslie?
Thank you, uh, Kristen, that was an excellent presentation, thank you very much, very informative. Uh, you went through it quickly, but you included everything and I like the fact that you've uploaded it to the town website. Great graphs, the whole thing, I, I think it's wonderful what you just presented. Um, the, the one question I have seen a little bit is, um, let's say, uh, someone's walking on their own street outside. Uh, just for a quick walk, no one is around, um, should they be wearing their masks?
Ye- yes, they should, so that's new to the order, so. It's, uh, again, a public place, is the street a public way, and I know that's really hard for people. And, and I think on a public health, we get it, we're, we know the risk is so low, but the order is the order. Um, and the reason for it is, it's the problem before, um, it was just, it was so gray. At what point when you're passing that other person, you know, so for the state, they just made it blanket and, um, find a comfortable mask, it's warm. Uh, it, it will keep you warm through these cold months, but yes, if you were on a public street or public way, um, you should be wearing a mask.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Leslie, uh, any other questions from members of the board? I will ask a question because I, as you mentioned, uh, there is, uh, um, some. Outreach or webinar being, uh, planned for local businesses to help them understand the, uh, arrangements. Or the new restrictions that they'll be operating under, can you say a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so we should have a flyer developed, this is all moving so quickly. I think I filled it a few questions from businesses and went, oh no, they don't know where to go and, you know, people are confused. So, um, it's really a concept we've just developed, um, in the last few days, but we'll put the flyer together, it's gonna require regi- registration. Ahead, very simple, you know, you've registered for webinars, a lot of you, real quick, you know, we just wanna take the business name or type of business. And then any questions they wanna submit before the, um, presentation, so we can develop the presentation and make sure it's useful for them. So we'll see that on, we'll put on the town's webpage in the next day and day or two under news and announcements. Um, we'll definitely look, we're gonna be working with the, uh, Chamber of Karma, so local representatives, so we'll be pushing it out that way. Maybe, um, networking through CMR PC and then we're gonna grab every email listserv we have for any permitted business. So if you're a food establishment, we're gonna send you an email, um, if you have a liquor license, we'll send you an email. I'm also working with the town clerk's office, um, and the fire department to say what other business email listservs do we have. So it'll be open to all businesses, well, we will record it, um, as well, so if people can attend, they could submit their question in advance. Um, and then they could see that, um, presentation that would be uploaded to the resources for business, um, page on the COVID town webpage.
Excellent, thank you very, very much. If there are no other questions from the board? Uh, John, do you have anything you'd care to add?
Uh, no, I just wanna thank, uh, Kristen for, uh, for jumping in and making such a great contribution in the short time that she's been here. Um, the, uh, things have gone well, she's integrated in the organization, uh, beautifully. Like I said, uh, we're, we're, we're really happy to have her here and, uh, and we've really kind of focused, as you can tell, uh, on pushing information out. It is very confusing, you know, we met last week, we pushed a whole bunch of information out about it looking like the town of Northborough. We were gonna go, we, we turned red and we were gonna, there were implications if we stayed red for a couple of weeks. We pushed all that out to the businesses, uh, so that they knew what was happening. And then lo and behold, on Friday, as Kristen said, all the metrics changed, now we're no longer red, we're yellow. And so this gets confusing for folks, so, um, uh, so we thought we'd put together this, uh, this webinar for them. At least, uh, you know, if nothing else, it's a, a, a way to introduce, uh, contacts, uh, get some FaceTime. Uh, uh, again, strengthen the relationships with, specifically with the business community, uh, so they know where to go. And, uh, it is confusing and if you get on the website, you know, you just need one document, uh, but you're having trouble finding it. Uh, we're like as a resource to try to get you to where it is that, that you need to go. Uh, but again, um, it'll be Kristen, myself, uh, quarter nine, I believe the two chiefs are gonna participate as well. And, uh, uh, so that right now is, uh, scheduled for Monday, uh, Monday, November sixteenth at ten AM. And as Kristen said, we'll record it, uh, and again, it's just about trying to connect people with information, uh, and resources. And, uh, and also letting them know, look, if you, if you get stumped and you, and you don't know what's happening or you just can't find the piece of information that you need. By all means, call the Board of Health and we'll try to get you what you, what you need, so, uh, just good customer service. And, um, like, like I said, it, it changes, uh, sometimes daily, but it changes at least weekly. And it's hard to keep up, and so we just wanna make sure that we're, we want to give people the resources that they need to be able to do the job that they wanna do. Which is keep themselves, their employees and their customers safe, so.
Uh, Kristen, once again, thank you very much, uh, for a very comprehensive presentation. Uh, I think this is gonna be very well received by the public and certainly, um, uh, anyone who's interested in, uh, seeing this information can go to the town website. Uh, the information that's being presented there has been enhanced, the organization has been improved and. Should be very easy for people to get a lot of information that they're looking for, so. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kristen.
It's now past the hour of seven ten PM and we have John Codera, Town Administrator. Consideration of a one-time reduction in section twelve alcoholic license fees, common victular fees. And entertainment license fees due to COVID nineteen, John?
So you just heard from, uh, Kristen that the regulations impacting our businesses, but specifically and, and probably. Most significantly, our restaurants and our, in our food establishments now, they need to be closed by nine thirty. Um, just kind of bring you guys back, uh, you know, we had, um, we did, uh, a, uh, a little bit of, uh, an outreach. At, uh, a prior Board of Selectments meeting when all of this started, uh, and we did it specifically for the business community. Um, to give some, some resources to them, uh, to help try to explain where things were going. We brought the corridor nine chamber, we had Executive Director Karen Shapman in to, to help explain all of the. Small business resources and so forth that are, uh, that were available, uh, to, uh, to businesses. Um, but we were all frustrated because under the CARES Act and specifically the cor- coronavirus relief funds. Um, we're prohibited from using any of those funds to provide any kind of business assistance, uh, programs. And so, um, so we can't provide any financial assistance. Again, we try to do the best that we can, uh, in terms of getting information out. As part of that meeting, if you recall, we launched a, uh, a, a open for business, local Northborough Open for Business Initiative. Where we were asking anybody that, uh, businesses that were actually, uh, open during the early, uh, time of the pandemic. Um, to, uh, put their information on our website and we provided links. Again, just a way to promote, uh, local businesses that were able to be open in conformance with the governor's guidelines, uh, and that were still functioning. So, we did everything that we could. Um, but, uh, but again, we're, we're limited in, in, in terms of any other financial assistance, uh, that we can do for. Uh, our local businesses, so what we have, uh, before you tonight is, um, our annual license renewal. So as you know, we license, uh, all the liquor, uh, pouring establishments. Um, those are the section twelve, Mass General Law, one thirty-eight, section twelve, these are your restaurant pouring licenses. Um, there's all alcohol, there's wine and malt, and we have one club license, uh, at the American Legion. And so, uh, we started a, a couple of weeks ago, I'd asked Diane Whackel in our office to do a little bit of research, compile some information. Uh, with the thought of, you know, uh, maybe the board would like to consider, uh, discounting these licenses on a one-time basis. Just given the situation with COVID nineteen and the impacts that particularly the restaurants are feeling, uh, right now. Uh, and, and with the timing of the governor, uh, requiring, uh, no additional, uh, service and, uh, enclosures at nine thirty. Again, just another constraint on businesses that are really struggling to, to try to make ends meet. Uh, so we put some information together for your consideration tonight. And, uh, essentially, um, we've seen some towns start to look at this, uh, we would be one of the first, uh, couple of communities to do something like this. But, uh, what we have is, uh, proposing a fifty percent, it could be anything you want. Um, I don't recommend a hundred percent, uh, but, uh, but some towns have done, you know, twenty-five percent or a ten percent reduction in these fees. And so, um, what I'm proposing, uh, for your discussion and consideration tonight is a fifty percent reduction in one time. For the fiscal twenty-one license fee, so these are the renewals for calendar year, December, uh, twenty twenty. And the, the thought process, you know, why fifty percent? Um, you know, again, this, this isn't gonna make or break any business, it's a, it's a show of support and I think it'll be well received. Um, but fifty percent is a partnership, you know, the town clearly has its own revenue, uh, constraints and issues that we're undergoing right now. And will continue to, uh, be under for the next, uh, several years as this recession works its way through to a recovery and things start to improve. Um, but again, uh, a fifty percent partnership would mean that we're giving a break, uh, to these businesses. Um, the town is still, uh, partnering with them and, you know, to, to a large extent, it is, um. You know, as I said, it's not going to save a business that is, uh, that is having difficulty. But when you're looking at their occupancy being reduced to fifty percent or forty percent. Again, it's just, uh, it's just something for your, uh, consideration. To put some numbers to what, uh, what I'm, I'm looking at. Uh, we have a total of fifteen al- alcohol, uh, pouring licenses, one wine and malt and one club. And in total, uh, it brings in about, uh, about thirty-six, roughly thirty-six thousand dollars. And so a fifty percent reduction, uh, in those fees, again, one time for this December. I'm really hoping by the time we hear next December that everybody's had a vaccine. And we're all getting together and having a drink somewhere at a local restaurant and, uh, and things are looking, and the outlooks look a little bit different. Um, but for right now, things are still pretty grim and pretty tight. Um, but a fifty percent reduction would be, uh, on those licenses, uh, you know, just shy of eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, we do also have, uh, common vic licenses, uh, common victory licenses for our restaurants. Those tend to be smaller dollar amounts, they're hundred dollar licenses, so, yeah, fifty percent would be a, a fifty dollar difference. So if we did, um, a fifty percent reduction on our common vic licenses as well as our entertainment licenses. That would be about another, uh, about another five thousand dollars, uh, in total, it's about five thousand dollars. So half that would be about twenty, twenty-six hundred dollars roughly. So if this is something the board, uh, would consider, uh, and you implement it, it would mean a, uh, a, a, a reduction in revenues. And license revenues for fiscal twenty-one, the fiscal year that we're in right now, of about twenty thousand dollars. Um, again, uh, it's not gonna make or break the town of Northborough anymore than it's likely to make or break. All of the businesses that would be impacted, but I think again, it's a show of, of, of the fact that we acknowledge the position that they're in. Um, this is something that we can do, uh, it is, uh, it is real money, uh, you know, all alcohol licenses, uh, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So a fifty percent reduction in that is, is meaningful. And, um, so we are in the process right now of our renewals, uh, this, these take place every year, uh, in December. So at your meeting in December, we'll be looking at these renewals. So if we were going to do something like this, now would be the time for the board to take this up. Again, I, I think you're probably gonna see more communities doing something along these lines, uh, to varying degrees. And, um, you know, it's, you know, it's largely symbolic, uh, on a seventy million dollar budget, again, it's not gonna make or break us. We do have some positive things that are happening in the current fiscal twenty-one budget, as you know, the governor and the legislature. Uh, well, the legislature hasn't completed its budget process, but they have an agreement to hold us harmless on our chapter ninety and our unrestricted general government aid. So, you know, overall, um, you're going to see, uh, a little better revenue picture for us, um, for fiscal twenty-one. So I'm comfortable that, you know, this is something that we would be able to absorb. Um, at your next board meeting on the twenty-third is the annual tax classification hearing. At that meeting, we'll give it, we'll give you an overview with regard to, uh, 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 development, new growth. Uh, the tax rate and the tax impacts. But based on the budget that we passed at town meeting on July eighteenth. And the fact that we have not had a fall town meeting to increase those budgets, we tightened up, uh, we brought forward a very, uh. A very, uh, conservative budget that really constrained spending to the, to the limits of, uh, of what we could. Uh, implement and preserve our current level of services. Uh, based on that, we're anticipating a minimal or potential decrease in the average single-family homes tax bill. Uh, so those numbers are still being finalized, but again, that will take place at your next, uh, at your next meeting on, uh, November twenty-third. So that's the, um, that's the information, uh, I put together, it's in your packet. And, uh, again, there's no requirement that you do this, it's just something that, uh, I know the board has individually and as a group expressed concerns. About what we can do for the business community, you know, we do outreach, as you know, next week we have this, uh, webinar for businesses specifically. We're very limited what we can do, we work through the Chamber of Commerce to get information out to them. But this is something, uh, direct and tangible that the board can do if, if, and it's in your discretion, and if you'd like to do it. You have the information before you tonight, so I, I can certainly have and answer any questions that you may have. Um, as I said, this isn't gonna make or break the town's budget anymore than it's gonna make or break keeping a business, uh, you know, above. Uh, surviving, but it is a token and it's, uh, and it's certainly an acknowledgement that based on these new orders. Businesses are suffering, we know they are, we wanna support them, we wanna promote them, and this is one thing that we can do.
Thank you very much, John. Uh, so board members, first of all, do you have any informational questions for John, uh, about this proposal? Tim?
Thanks for, uh, thanks for the information, John, um, if, if we, um, if we do this, is it? Is it set in stone tonight? Um, the reason why I ask is. With the, the election, the federal elections finally taking place and got some, some idea of, of what that's gonna look like. Um, I know that we've got that one point three million dollars. In, in aid that's sitting in the bank account that we can't touch, if that becomes available, um. You know, that's gonna change the financial outlook for the town, so is there some way? Like if we did fifty percent tonight, no, we're gonna get that money at some point in the future, can we reimburse or cut it down to, to zero? For, for, to help these businesses out?
Uh, well, the renewals are taking place next month, so, you know, again, the, the timeliness of this, why we're bringing it to you tonight. Is we really need to make a decision, uh, communicate it to them so that we can get through this, uh, upcoming renewal. In terms of the, the funding, we don't know what's gonna happen with, with those funds, Tim, you're referring to the, uh, CARES Act. Specifically the coronavirus relief funds, um, uh, the state of Massachusetts got two point seven billion dollars of that. They released approximately five hundred thou- five hundred million of that to municipalities and the formula was based on population. What that translates down to for the town of Northborough is one point three million dollars. The problem is those revenues cannot be used for general, uh, those funds cannot be used for general revenue replacement. Uh, there are lots of restrictions in terms of how they can be used from the federal government. And then there's additional restrictions that have been placed on the use of those funds by the state, specifically administration and finance, um, at the state level. Um, and so it's limited mostly to PPE, protective gear, gloves, Plexiglas, temporary measures. Uh, and immediate expenses pertaining and related to fighting COVID, uh, nineteen. So, uh, if that changes, uh, and it's open up to, uh, general revenue replacement. Um, you know, that would help the town, uh, but I don't, I, I don't know what's going to happen, but at, at this point in time, uh, based on the information, we know. You know, um, you know, my recommendation would be to, to do a, a fifty percent reduction, I think, again, I think what it's very. What it's very symbolic in representing a partnership, you know, uh between the town and the and the businesses. Uh down the line, if if we get additional aid, there'll be a whole new set of uh restrictions and. And permissible spending associated with that, and we'll we'll take a look at everything again, but in terms of this cycle. My recommendation to the board would be make the decision tonight, we'll implement it for December. And then down the road, as we get further along, if additional revenues become available, uh the additional programs or options, we'll we'll continue to review that. As I think you're all very painfully aware, you know, this isn't anything that's going to be over anytime soon, we're likely to be. Adding these discussions right through to about this time next year, and we're we're gonna have to keep looking at this stuff, so. Just based on what we know now, Tim, that my recommendation would be to to do a fifty percent reduction.
Yeah, I I I agree with that, just more along the lines, if 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 more funds become available, I wanna make sure um. That the businesses in town are are included in those those discussions on. Uh how we allocate any money that becomes available, we have talked about that one point three million dollars. I know it's unavailable, I know it's up in the air, I know there's a lot of restrictions on it, but if it does become available, um.
I think what we're really, I'm sorry to interrupt, I I I think what we're really all hoping for is. Another round of 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 aid that would do more to assist small businesses. Everybody's in agreement, uh you know, small businesses need as much help as they can get. Um they can only get by so long and you know, we can, we're promoting our local businesses, we're working with the chamber. To make sure that they're aware of any programs through small business uh administration or uh paycheck protection programs. Um so when we're hopeful that there'll be another round of assistant, really meaningful. Real money, meaningful assistance for small businesses, when that becomes available, again, we will promote it through the. Uh through the Chamber of Commerce, get that out to our folks, um but that's where, you know, that's really where they're gonna see. Meaningful assistance if it's going to come.
Yeah, okay, all right, great, thank you, John.
Yes.
Thank you, Tim, uh any other board members with questions? Uh seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve a one time fifty percent reduction in section twelve alcoholic license fees. Common particular license fees and entertainment license fees due to COVID nineteen.
Second.
Moved by Tim Kalin, seconded by Leslie Ratan, uh any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote, Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
Tim Kalin.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, carries unanimously, um. Thank you all for that consideration, thank you, John, for preparing the information for us so that we uh understand uh. Um what's happening from the town side, what the potential assistance is to the business side, uh I think it's clear that. Um this is a relatively small bit of assistance and. What the public can do to try to assist these businesses is to continue to give them your patronage to the greatest extent possible. Uh that's that's the best way over the short term, hopefully, uh to try to preserve um their viability, so. Uh thank you all very much for that. It's now past the hour of seven fifteen PM, we have Scott Sharptier, Public Works Director. Update regarding traffic concerns in the vicinity of Bartlett Street, Scott, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's been uh several correspondence to this board, planning board upon Public Works regarding uh traffic concerns. Those concerns are generally in the Bartlett Street area, Bartlett, Maple Ridge, Collins, um so. I prepared a memorandum for the board, I'll go over briefly um some of the findings and um uh actions we're taking. It's important, I think, to understand how we got the truck exclusion on. The portion of Maple Street between Route twenty and Ridge and also on Collins Road back in two thousand fourteen. Um development was going on along Bartlett Street and a um comprehensive uh traffic count was was done. We did traffic counts on Collins Ridge and both sections of Maple Street. Those segments that met the criterion threshold to apply for a truck exclusion. Uh which needs truck traffic to exceed five percent. Um the town then went forward to submit a request for a permit through Mass DOT for a truck exclusion. Um the only roads that uh met that requirement was Collins and the section of Maple Street between twenty and Ridge. The process is we get the traffic counts, the town submits a permit application to Mass DOT. Mass DOT reviews that application. Uh when they approve it, they provide uh the ability for the local board of selectmen to authorize the truck exclusion. We send proof back to Mass DOT that the local um governing body approved the truck exclusion. And then they issue the final permit and give us the signs, we put up the signs and the truck exclusion is 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 enforceable. Um so that's how we got to where we are today. There's been concern about additional truck traffic that's been observed on Maple Street, trucks uh going up and down Ridge Road. One of the things we'd like to do quickly to address those concerns is to. Um direct some some more advanced warning signs, the regulatory signs, they're yellow signs, we put them up to let drivers know that there is. Um a regulate a a regulatory sign coming up. So we're proposing to put one up on Bartlett Street uh at the Maple Street intersection. And then one in Lyman Street at uh at Ridge, it'll just warn those drivers before they turn down those roads and have. Essentially, no nowhere else to go, don't turn down the road, there's a truck exclusion coming up. That's something we can do relatively quickly, those signs have been ordered. In the long term, you know, everybody knows we have Amazon facility opening up on Bartlett Street, it's not yet operational. We would like to get out and do some more traffic counts in the spring, we can't do traffic counts in the winter, you can't put. Road when we're paving, everyone when we're plowing the roads. Um so our goal is to get some new traffic counts in the spring, when the facility is open and operational. Um grab those counts on Ridge Road and the other half of Maple Street, see if they meet meet the threshold. Um if they meet the thresholds, then the town can pursue the same action we did in two thousand fourteen to obtain the current truck exclusions we have. Um but I think it's important that we wait until those facilities are fully open and operational to gather, you know, accurate and comprehensive data. Um you know, that'll be coming this 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 spring. Another concern that was expressed to um to us is um communication with 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 Amazon. Um and their drivers, so we we did reach out, you know, the the police department did reach out to Amazon, talk to their operational staff. Like I said, they're still getting ramped up. Um but the indication is that we'll maintain an open line of communication with their operations department to let their drivers know. You know, there are easier ways to get to four ninety five and Bartlett twenty, you can go in other directions that are a little quicker. Um and we do have truck exclusions in the area, so please be aware, Maple Street is not an alternative, it's a truck exclusion road. Um so when you're going on uh Route twenty westbound, you can't go down Maple Street. That dialogue has been done between the town and other businesses in the past. Um it's not nothing, it's nothing new to us, we'll 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 engage it again. During um planning board meetings and um one of the recent board of selectmen meetings, there was a citizen report of tractor trailers parking. On Bartlett Street, uh right across the street from the driveway of number two hundred, there's a little gravel pull off spot there. It's actually located within the public way, we have a little bump out um along the public way. Public Works went out, we put some some barriers, some granite blocks along that gravel pull offs to to prevent. Tractor trailers from from parking and idling overnight at that location. So I'm hoping that that concern has been addressed, I know PD has increased their their patrols in that area just to make sure that. Um tractor trails aren't idling and aren't parking where they're not supposed to be. We also received a a concern about um Route twenty at Maple Street. Um there was a couple of issues that were brought up there, one was a desire for advanced warning signs, similar to what I just mentioned. Um to be placed on Route twenty eastbound and westbound um on the approach toward Maple. Route twenty is a a state highway, it's in a state jurisdiction. They have pretty stringent rules on what signs they allow and don't allow. Um they're very cognitive of 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 sign clutter and I don't. And uh expect that they would approve any advanced warning signs um on Route twenty, we've asked them before verbally. And they indicated they wouldn't do it. I don't expect them to to authorize that, I have not seen them elsewhere in town. One of the concerns on Route twenty also was the was the crosswalk, there's a crosswalk at the end of Maple Street that crosses Main Street. Somebody expressed uh concern about pedestrian safety getting across the crosswalk, again, it's a, this is a state highway. Um it's it's controlled by Mass DOT. We can make a request to them, but they don't always grant the request, so we did make a written request to Mass DOT. To allow installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Um those are the uh cross, the pedestrian activated crosswalk lights you see and um that's on West Westboro, they have them in and around the rotary. They're good for 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 driver awareness, we're actually, we actually purchased one recently. And we're gonna be installing it at the crosswalk on South Street down by North Gate. It's a a great application, they're very expensive, they're costly, um but in the right circumstances where it's warranted. Uh with poor sight distance, uh poor lighting, uh significant pedestrian and 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 vehicle interaction. Um it's it's a great treatment, so you know, we did make that written request of Mass DOT, we haven't heard back from them yet. So there are things that that we're we can do quickly. Put up some advanced warning signs to try to reduce the truck traffic, reach out to the to the to the business operators in the area. Um and we have started doing that. In the long term, it makes complete sense to to reevaluate traffic counts in an area that was done. You know, several, seven years ago by the time we redo we redo these. Um so we're gonna reach out to Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, C C R M P C and have them um. Hopefully get us in a schedule for late spring to do a traffic count in the area.
Thank you very much, Scott, um I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, I know we have had a lot of inquiries from the public. And staff has spent a a fair amount of time trying to run these down and get the information and be responsive, so. Certainly do uh appreciate the time uh spent to try to uh answer some of these questions. Uh we did have another uh uh separate from this, another question about uh. The CSX uh work uh on uh Route twenty Main Street uh at Blake Street in that vicinity. Um there were some questions about the equipment located there and the blocked access of that uh. Travel lane, uh is there some update you can give us about that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll give you a a quick summary of the project itself. Ever Source has a problematic gas main that runs underneath uh the CSX railroad tracks. They got a permit through Mass DOT against Route twenty is is a state jurisdictional uh roadway. Um to jack a new pipe under the tracks, they excavated their jacking pit, that's where the excavator is sitting now with the plates. They encountered a um uh an obstruction, a buried obstruction and went through the redesign process. Um and anything you redesign going under the railroad tracks requires CSX approval, which has been. A time consuming uh for Ever Source to obtain, so I spoke with the Ever Source representative this afternoon. They still haven't received final approval from CSX for uh an alternative design, so they are essentially pulling the plug on it for this year. Mass DOT is very similar to other communities um that that manage roadway such as Northborough. You know, as of December first, you don't open our roads, um you gotta close the road before December first, so the time has come, Ever Source can't get it done in time. So in the next two weekends, they're gonna get out there, route the pipe, build a hole, pave it. Um get it all buttoned up before Thanksgiving and then over the winter, reevaluate the design and then come back in the spring. Um and restart the project, so the expectation at this point is that. Uh the excavator will be gone, the road will be patched and open for traffic before Thanksgiving. And then we could do it all over again in the spring.
Great, looking forward to it.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate uh the uh the uh um the effort to try to uh. Get in touch with the appropriate people and get that feedback and and the prodding it took to uh to get that response, so thank you. Uh members of the board, any questions about any of the information that's been uh discussed here about uh traffic, Leslie?
Uh yes, Scott, thank you, uh this is very informative and from what I can tell and what what I can recall is does summarize. The issues that I've seen in various emails and comments come to us uh at our meetings. Uh one comment I had was that interestingly today I was on Route twenty. And there was an Amazon truck traveling on twenty west and they did take a left onto Hayes Memorial. Uh which makes total sense. So I don't know if someone has communicated with them that that's actually a very viable route and that's primarily a lot of trucks anyway. That's not a heavily traveled car route from what I can tell. So um I'm hoping that maybe that's a that's a trend and it made a lot of sense to see that happen, I'm assuming the truck was coming from four ninety five, so. Uh I thought that was very positive, um the other thing I was delighted to hear that about the crosswalk at Route twenty in Maple, I've been mentioning that crosswalk for a few years now. So something needs to happen there, it's a bad spot, it's a bad spot. So you know, with the fact that it converges with Brigham is it's a terrible location, so I'm hoping that something comes through on that. Um and yeah, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, pleasure.
Thank you, Leslie, uh other questions, uh Tim?
Uh done a question, just a comment, uh Scott, thank you very much for for all the work. Um the I was gonna ask about reaching out to Amazon and and just letting them know about the the truck exclusions that are over in that. That area, um I can tell you from experience that um reaching out to businesses does, it does make a difference. Um they do listen most of the time, um and if you do have hiccups when they don't listen, Scott, you know, you you call. And let them know again, just give them a a friendly reminder, um and they they do pay attention, so hopefully, Amazon. Um will be as responsive as the other businesses in town. Um that travel routes with uh with truck exclusion, so you know, I just wanna let people in the public know that. That most of the businesses are very responsive, um and if you if you do continue to see issues, just let us know. And um you know, we'll continue to reach out and you know, that they they hopefully will be responsive. So thank you for that, Scott, very much appreciated.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim, uh John, you like to add something?
Yeah, if I may, since there's been two comments um about this, so you all know, you know, I've lived on Ridge Road. It's my neighborhood, I've lived there for over twenty years and I have a daughter who goes to the high school. So I'm very familiar with these roads, very familiar with the traffic and the 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 um. And the and the patterns over on the on that area, just to kind of reiterate this outreach, so the police chief has already gone out and met with. The crews that are out there, so right now they're doing a tenant fit out, so Amazon is in operational yet. They're doing the tenant fit out to to get there, so there are some supply trucks that are coming and going, uh they don't know the area. So we've already reached out to the construction crews that are there to let them know, hey, this is the preferred route. Um as we uh start to move forward, we are reaching out and connecting with the community relations folks. Uh to to establish a more permanent uh dialogue with them so we can discuss any issues as they come up. And what I wanna use as a perfect example is when A Dewey pile went in, going back. Oh gosh, it's gotta be uh at least eight or nine years ago. Um you know, we kinda had some similar um growing pains where they, you know, their drivers were getting used to the roots and. And kinda how things worked, uh I reached out to Peter Latta, who is the owner of the company, I spoke with him personally. I explained the concerns of the town, that problem went away immediately. So to Tim's point, the businesses do care, uh we do establish those relationships. Um they're not operational yet, so we're kinda working, like I said, the police chief is already. Uh already gone down and met with the folks down there that are working on the construction, kinda telling them, you know, these are the preferred routes. Uh but as it moves forward, we will establish again, good relationships with them. And my experience has been they want to be good neighbors and uh and they wanna work with us, so uh we'll continue to do that. We've been successful doing it in the past and I believe we will uh be successful moving forward.
Thank you, John, uh Leslie.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was literally word for word what John just said, I recall going out to A Dewey pile, a few few board members, I think Town Engineer, John. Somebody else I think was there too, but they do, they do wanna be good community members, um and I think that. The issue of traffic I believe was discussed and where the trucks are gonna go, are they gonna come down Bartlett to Route twenty and all that kinda thing. And I just think what happens over the years, you know, things get a little bit more. You know, loose and or or maybe lost in the translation and things need to be reinforced a little bit. I think that at one point there was an issue with maybe, you know, what were their GPSs telling them? You know, some of these truck drivers don't live in town, they don't know, they don't really know the area, so they're just looking at their GPS, I think that was an issue too. You know, could that be adjusted so that they're being told to go another way, so. But they're always amenable to uh to what we what we say to them, so I think that's important, so, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie, uh Julianne, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you, um first of all, thank you, Scott, for.
Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, thank you, Scott, for, um, answering all of those questions. I'd also like to thank the residents for letting us know their concerns and, and very articulate emails so that we can address them. So just to be clear, for the Maple Street truck exclusion, there will be a sign on Bartlett Street that. There will eventually be a truck exclusion from Ridge on. Is it gonna say like partial truck restriction or something or?
The sign will be placed within the Bartlett Street right away at the intersection with Maple Street. It'll say truck exclusion ahead. It'll be, it'll be yellow with black lettering. White signs are regulatory, yellow signs are warning signs. So it'll be a yellow sign, black lettering, truck exclusion ahead. The same sign will be placed within the Lyman Street right away at the intersection with Ridge facing Lyman Street. So as a truck is approaching the intersection. They see a big yellow sign that says truck exclusion ahead.
Great. Okay. And the other, the other situation that, um. I, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that when we asked for a sign on Main Street that there's a truck exclusion on Maple Street. That that sign was denied. I mean, you, you know, a truck pulls in, it's hard for the truck to pull back. That it's the best, the best solution really is the sign on Main Street. I think we can all agree to that. What could we do as a board to help convince, um, Mass DOT? To, you know, that, that sign is, is probably the safest and best way to. To remediate this situation. Could we write a letter to them with you or what? Is there anything that you know that we could do?
I, I think the best approach at this point is to see where the numbers lie next year when we do the, uh, the traffic counts. If the truck, if the numbers warrant an extension of that truck exclusion throughout Maple Street from end to end. I believe that that will address the problem and there will no longer be what Leslie is referencing, a GPS glitch that shows half. The road is truck excluded and the other half is not. Uh, when an entire roadway corridor is truck excluded. You'd be surprised that cut through traffic for trucks disappears. Um, if that doesn't warrant. The, the meet the warrant for a truck exclusion next year, at that point, we should discuss how to approach Mass DOT. And see if there's an opportunity for an advanced warning sign. They may recommend finding out from which direction most of the vehicles come. I'm guessing it's mostly eastbound. Westbound, if they're driving in a big truck westbound and they're not gonna pass Bartlett to go down Maple to get to Bartlett. So I, I, I think we, we, we kind of, you know, tread water until we see what the counts look like, uh, next spring. And if they don't meet the warrant, then we discuss with Mass DOT and the board on their best approach.
And this, um, uh, you know, obviously I'm getting the sense from the residents that this is a problem that's been. They've been suffering with for a long time. It, um, is there any way to do like a preliminary truck traffic? Traffic count so that we know if like right now, before any of these things become operational, that, that we could get that information out more quickly?
Well, we can't, we can't do truck, we can't do traffic counts now because if it snows, we rip up the equipment. So they don't, they're not gonna put the traffic tubes out now. And it doesn't matter what the pre-existing condition is when you do traffic, when you do truck counts. All that matters is that when the, when you put it out there, you meet the percentages. It doesn't matter what it's doing today. It matters what's happening when you put the tubes out. So. Uh, my preference would be to utilize those services of a truck count with, with CMR PC. When we are most likely to obtain the data we want, which is an extension of the truck exclusion throughout Maple Street. Which is after Amazon's up and operational. That would be my recommendation.
I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. Um, and just to clarify, Julianne, your concern was traffic on Route 20 turning onto Maple Street, right?
Oh, yeah, that was one of my concerns, definitely.
Whether there's any signage or something that can more clearly indicate that that section of Maple is excluded. To prevent traffic turning down. Right, right. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing that, uh, Scott, thank you very much. Uh, as always, very helpful, very complete and informative. Appreciate all the work you're doing. So.
You're welcome, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Which brings us to reports. Uh, Scott Rogers?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. A series of thank yous. Uh, first to Andy Dowd and all the election workers for a smooth and safe election day. Really appreciate all the effort that went into making that. A, uh, efficient, uh, and, and actually, uh, well-covered event in terms of press at both the state and national level. So, uh. Congratulations to the team on that. Uh, thank you to Chief Parenti for the October report and the description of the work that was done under the Senior Safe Grant. Took a dunk some home inspections and safety education. And, uh, based on the report, uh, maybe an opportunity for the chief to just remind everyone. Of the importance of maintaining detectors, if, if you're willing to do that for us, chief.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thanks, Scott. Um, so it's, uh. The, the grant that we, uh, were luck, uh, lucky enough to get was the Senior Safe Grant, which provided some funds to cover. Uh, some purchasing batteries, some equipment, some smoke detectors and to cover some overtime for guys to go out and do a blitz on a Saturday. And, uh, to go out and, and, and spend some time at some, uh. Some of our, one of our vulnerable populations, which is the senior population within, in town. We, uh. Every house we went into, I think we went in just shy of 12 houses. Every house we went into had significant detector problems. Either detectors that were well over 20 years old and not working, no batteries. Several cases, there were no detectors at all within these homes. Which is not unusual if someone's kept their home for 20 or 30 or 40 years. That there would be detectors in there. That's not an unusual situation. We were able to, uh, to make those houses at least temporarily safer. Either by installing a smoke detector or changing out batteries or installing CO detectors, uh, changing out batteries there as well. Uh, in fact, uh, we, we still have some leftover supplies and we went on a call the other day and one of the, uh. One of the firefighter medics noticed it was the same type of situation with the senior house and. Uh, they had an issue and he came back to me and said, can we help him? I said, yep. And he went right back out and put up two new detectors because they didn't have any. So that's a great program, but it's really important to, uh, remember these seniors don't always know what's missing. So I would ask everyone who's out there, uh, to check on your neighbors. Uh, check on your mom and dad, check on your aunt and uncle or, 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 or reach out to everyone and say, hey, why don't you run over and check those detectors? Now we just turned the clocks back and you know, the fire service for years has had. You know, fall ahead, spring behind, uh, fall ahead, phew. As you change your clock to change your battery. Now the new detectors come out with the 10-year, uh, sealed batteries. You can't do that anymore. There's a reason for that. So they. When a battery dies, you throw out the detectors and you get new ones. But we really encourage everyone to help check on their neighbors and, and Scott, I really appreciate you bringing that up. It was, uh, we knew we had some issues, but it was a real eye opener to know that every house we went into had a problem. We are right now in the process of applying for that grant again. We do have some funds left over. So we're planning on doing another day out of this. Grant and, uh, we're hoping to get into as many facilities as possible. We are working with Liz through the senior center. And, uh, a couple of my captains been around, uh, heck of a lot longer than me and they know all the contacts and they're reaching out and trying to get into some others, other. Areas that are primarily senior, uh, senior citizens. So thank you very much for asking.
Thank you, chief. Um, also thank you to Chief Liver for, uh, his report. Um. I'm gonna be a little selfish and issue a personal congratulations to Connor Henry. For his graduation from Training Academy and his start on field training. Connor's, uh, been a friend of the family and a neighbor and, uh, so to see, uh, a young, uh, uh, Algonquin, uh. Graduate, uh, pursue that course is, is, is heartwarming, uh, to me. Uh, also looked from the report, uh, best wishes are deserved to Detective, uh, Mafiaoli on his retirement. So, uh, thank, thanks to him for his, uh, service to our community. Uh, Northborough Community Affairs, uh, had the successful Jack-o'-lantern, uh, stroll. And, uh, congratulations to the winners on their creative carvings. Uh, the next event coming out of Community Affairs, uh, will be Light Up the Town. Uh, so there's gonna be, uh, an event that, uh, is devoted to lighting displays and, uh, at our homes. The December 4th through the 14th, you can go to northboroughcac dot web, weebly.com, weebly, W E B L Y dot com for more details. Also, um, huge, uh, commend the, uh, Borough's Cares for Troops. And the Hometown Heroes Program that put the banners up, uh, along Main Street. They look fantastic. Uh. I definitely re- uh, recommend, uh, taking the time to walk along, uh, uh, the route there rather than drive because you just can't read them fast enough as, as you're driving by. So. Fantastic program there and the banners look, uh, really, really nice. That concludes my reports for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, Julianne?
Yes, thank you. So, um, in line with that, yes, Wednesday, November 11th is Veterans Day. A time to remember and thank our armed service members and their families for ensuring that we can live in a safe democracy with all of the privileges that brings. I'd like to personally express my gratitude to all of those armed service members and their families for their enormous sacrifices. And I'm not gonna repeat what Scott said, but I want to echo what he said about the. The Hometown Heroes banners and thank the Borough Cares for Troops organization that sponsored it. Just to add something to Scott's report, if you want more information, it's at www dot B C four, the number four, T dot org. And also I, I echo what Scott said about the election. It was seamless and professional and so, and. Just, we're so proud of it. Um. And same with, with Community Affairs. It was a great fun event, even though there was a little snow. And so Historic District Commission is, uh, I'm liaison to that. So. I'll report on their October 22nd meeting where they are continuing to discuss their specific goals for the master plan. There was a very extensive report done in 2008 and the committee decided as a first step to review those documents. The Historic District Commission meets every third Wednesday of the month usually, and their next meeting is November 18th. And another, another event that I hope people can take advantage of, the Northborough Culture Cultural Council produced their 60-minute video. Their, uh, virtual culture fest. It was aired this weekend. It's really wonderful and it's now available on YouTube. Also, there's been a change for them. As, and many people know that they, um, have a wonderful grant program. And their grant applications have been extended to December 14th. And you would get information on that at www dot mass hyphen culture dot org. And, um, I just have one request for the next upcoming me- meetings. Um, we haven't talked about. A town hall feasibility study in a while, and I wonder if we could get an update on that in the next meeting or two. So that ends my report.
Thank you, Julianne. Wesley?
Okay. I think we're all gonna be echoing Scott tonight. You mentioned all these great things. So I, I won't, um, you know, repeat it word for word, but the, uh, Jack-o'-lanterns were great. And I would like to thank the, uh. Community Affairs Committee, obviously, but also to the DPW because. I believe you made the, your department made the wooden shelves that those pumpkins sat on. And, uh, that was excellent. I mean, the first time I drove by and thought, well, what the heck is that? Are we changing the fence? You know, what's going on there? But then I realized, okay, that makes sense. The pumpkins will sit on there. So. That was very nicely done. That made a lot of sense and it really added a lot of spirit, I think, to the downtown to have that kind of thing going on. And as Scott mentioned too, with the, the, uh, holiday decoration event, Light Up the Town, um, he already mentioned the website for that. And that's another festive thing. I think that's a, a great idea. I could see that kind of thing. Uh, being an annual event because I think people love to get in their cars with their kids and drive around and look at lights. So. And that seems to have been kind of missing over the last few years in this area. And I think that would be a nice, nice thing to have. And again, the Hometown Heroes is wonderful. Um. It's, it's just impressive and I think it just gives us all something very tangible to look at. We all know that we have veterans in our midst here in town, but to be able to see. A selected photo and their name, um, I think really means a lot to everybody and especially to those veterans who are still with us. So I think that's a wonderful project. By the Borough's Cares for Troops. Very, very impressive. Also, I did hear a lot of people just absolutely, uh, just so pleased with how the voting went. I think some people. Some people didn't know that all the voting had moved to the middle school. I think they were a little bit nervous about really where to go and maybe they haven't been to the middle school in a while. It's kind of tucked away in that part of town, but I think once they got there, they realized it really was very easy. They were told where, you know, which door to go in and then which way you're directed based on the precinct that you're voting for, voting in. So I think that went very, very well. I want to thank Andy Dowd, Karen Wilbur, uh, all the poll volunteers in the police department, um, for all that. Everybody was very pleased with how that went. I've been asked to announce, uh, troop, uh, Boy Scout Troop 101's annual resale. Um, there's a. There is a link, but it's kind of a, not a difficult one, but it's kind of long. I'll give it out anyway. It's, it's. HTTPS colon backslash backslash scoutsales.org? Question mark five six zero dot five eight dot six three one. It actually works. I did try it. It does actually take you somewhere. So I did want to mention that, but I am also hoping that the, uh, the leadership of Troop 101 could, um, actually put that on their Facebook page. I, I did look at that too. And they have made announcements in the past, uh, for previous years. They've talked about it, but if they could put that on their Facebook page, I think that would be, um, probably a lot easier for people. There is an opportunity to go on to the, uh, into the forums. Very easy. You click on how many wreaths you would like and, uh, whether you'd like to make a donation. Uh, you get a receipt, you get a confirmation about that. They will, the scouts will deliver the wreath and a nice bow made by the Girl Scouts to your front door and ring the doorbell and run probably. So, because of COVID, they're not going to stand there and wait for you to answer the door. So. $15 per wreath and it's the largest fundraiser. So I did want to make mention of that. Um, I think that's a wonderful, uh, fundraiser for them to have. And, um. I wanted to mention too, that in the, at the end of the police chief's report. That there were some very nice complimentary letters about the professionalism of Tom McDonald, Kevin Freworth and Officer Sullivan. So I wanted to make mention of that. I think that's very important. I, I know there are a lot of statistics and things to point out as well, but. I think, you know, in these times when people are unhappy and there are things that people would. Potentially complain about, it's, it's nice when we receive letters from people who are happy with what's going on in the community. Cause everybody is working hard. So I think it's nice to get that kind of acknowledgement. So, um, that is my report.
Thank you very much, Leslie. Uh, Tim?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. Much like everybody else, uh, I just want to thank Andy Dowd, um, for the election, uh, especially the, um. All the mail-in votes that came in, uh, from, from the community. I know that's a, a new endeavor for, for the town to handle. That type of, for, for mail-in voting and, you know, from all, all reports, everything went, went well. So, um. Thanks for, for making that smooth for everybody, uh, making sure that the boxes were out and emptied and everybody was confident that their votes got counted. And thanks, uh, Borough's Cares for Troops for the Hometown Heroes banners. Um, you know, they look, they look great. And, you know, to, to Julianne's point, um. And Wednesday is, is Veterans Day. Uh, it's a good time or, uh. Every day should be a, you should appreciate veterans, but just on, on Wednesday, it's. It's important to, to reach out to people, you know, it's, uh. My, my grandfather fought, fought in World War II. We never liked to talk about it much and in. Within the last couple of weeks, I just found a letter from him that he wrote from Germany in 1945 and he fought with, uh, General George Patton. Drove tanks and was on the front lines of invading Germany. And just never knew that about him. So, um. You know, if you, if you know veterans, they're, they're not only heroes, um, they're, they're important people in our history. And they carry stories that, that you'll never be able to, to capture. You know, once, once, once they, they, they pass on. So. Take the opportunity to, to reach out and, and learn and appreciate what the, the veterans have been through. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Um, I'm gonna have a lot of echo, echo, echo going on here. Uh. Let me start with, uh, uh, Halloween. Uh, appreciate all of the, um, the efforts, uh. That were made in response to that. And I'd just like to. that were made in response to that and I'd just like to thank all of the citizens, the neighborhoods, doing what they could to try to make make it as enjoyable a Halloween season as it could be. In our neighborhood, we were predominantly doing the, you know, table with treats out near the edge of the, the front of the properties and everything, so the kids could come by and pick up their treats. It's not an easy circumstance and I can imagine that there was challenges for the parents as well to, to try to make it an enjoyable holiday for the kids. So I appreciate everyone's efforts in that regard. As far as election goes, Town Clerk Andy Dowd, Assistant Town Clerk Karen Wilbur and all of the election workers for their efforts, both with the early voting opportunities and Election Day at Melican. It's just a tremendous amount of work and obviously a large turnout comparatively. Little extra burden with the number of mail-in ballots that had to be processed and handled. So we certainly appreciate all the work that went into that. So everybody just take a break for a while now, okay? Both the Hometown Heroes and the Veterans Day Observance Wednesday, just want to acknowledge what's already been said. Fortunately, I was able to be downtown when they did the Veterans Parade route from the American Legion out to Memorial Field. So I'm just very appreciative of what our veterans have contributed for us, our safety, our security. Chief Liver was at the head of the procession, leading that. Just, just a moment in time, I guess, under the circumstances. Kind of a quietly advertised event. On the one hand, you want to make the acknowledgement and turn out for that event and on the other hand, understanding that we're operating in a COVID environment and, you know, large public gatherings are not recommended, so. Just want to acknowledge all the efforts of our veterans. It was an excellent celebration. The Hometown Heroes banners looked fabulous, just very very impressed by it. I think it does bring to mind how many people, local people have been involved and have made their contribution. I want to thank Public Works Department as well for their efforts to get the banners hung. Seems like Public Works has its tentacles everywhere, so this was yet another contribution that DPW made to get the banners up and have them on display, so much appreciated. Police report's been mentioned. I want to thank both Police Chief and Fire Chief for, for their monthly reports. It's always very helpful to understand what's going on there, but Police Chief Liver, if you would perhaps explain a little bit about the accreditation process that has recently taken place.
The Mass Police Accreditation Commission has two hundred and fifty-seven mandatory standards, one hundred and twenty-five optional standards that one, that the department has to demonstrate compliance with every three years in order to be considered an accredited police department. The standards are all based on both US and international best standards in policing, best practices rather. We started as, under national accreditation back in nineteen eighty-nine, when Chief Hutchins got us accredited then. In two thousand three, when Chief Leahy came on board, he switched to state accreditation. And the reason for that is that state accreditation is somewhat more friendly to smaller police agencies than national accreditation. That was based on larger police agencies that had divisions and lots of people and the chiefs had drivers, but, you know, that's not here, so. State accreditation allowed for part-time officers in smaller communities so that they could bring their policies, procedures and practices up to best practices nationwide and internationally. This is our sixth state award. And again, during the course of the next three years, we will have to maintain documentation and records that demonstrate compliance with our policies and procedures. And in three years, they'll be back again. I actually Sergeant Griffin, who was a fill-in accreditation manager, got an email today from the team leader from the accreditation telling him that there were no problems and everything was good and they were going to recommend to the commission that we'd be re-accredited for another three years and that will happen at the commission's formal meeting when they'll vote to approve our, our award. So I really want to thank all of the sergeants and Chris Carlton, our communication supervisor. It was a huge team effort at, at the end. And they really pulled it through to get all the compliance documents in place. All the documents were here, we just had to put them in different folders, which normally done by the accreditation manager. Unfortunately, he's been out of work for a little while. So we had to finish that form. And that's basically it on the accreditation. And the good-looking guy in the, in the banner at Hudson Street and Main Street is my father, not me. It just says William Liver because I'm a junior, but.
Very good. Thank you very much, Chief. You know, something that just lends, you know, to the credibility, the authority, the best practices and everything that our police department strives for. So certainly appreciate the effort that goes into that and it's very worthwhile undertaking. To turn back briefly to the, I, I sort of meant to mention this in our traffic discussion earlier, but I just wanted to acknowledge Aaron Hutchins, who had sent me an inquiry about the project on Main Street at Blake Street for the CSX and Eversource thing or something with the excavator and the blocked lane. In response to his question, I directed that to town staff and DPW Director Scott Charpentier has answered that question this evening. The selectmen were in receipt today of a memo from the planning board, basically indicating the receipt that they had had about citizens expressing concerns about traffic. And also, John, maybe you could clarify this a little bit. I think in regard to the truck exclusion proposal for Bartlett Street, there's been some discussion about chapter ninety funding in relationship to that. I'm concerned that there's a mistaken understanding of what that program is and how the funding for it works, so. Before that gets too far down the road, I wonder if you could just clarify that a little bit for us.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. So, so chapter ninety isn't some, you know, some magical grant program. It's a formulaic funding source for municipalities and essentially it's based on road miles and, and a number of other factors. But so our chapter ninety funding that we get from the state is, is part of what we use to maintain our roadways, is part of our overall comprehensive pavement management plan. And so as you all are familiar with, we have a pavement condition assessment that we do every couple of years. And that assessment tells us the, the useful life left in, in rates every single roadway in town. And we need to spend about one point one million dollars minimally in order to maintain our current roadway pavement condition index, which right now is about a seventy-three. So we've, we've stabilized our, our pavement condition index. There was a time where it was on the decline. It was on the decline when we were spending just the chapter ninety allotment that we get from the state. So put it in perspective, I want to say our chapter ninety allotment is somewhere, somewhere around six hundred thousand dollars. We have another three hundred thousand dollars in the DPW operating budget. And then there's another three hundred thousand that we typically appropriate using one-time revenues with free cash to get to that one point one million dollars. But essentially, this isn't some grant program. You don't apply for it for a specific road. It's part of a comprehensive pavement management plan that we put in place about five years ago. Went through capital planning, Board of Selectmen as part of our financial trend monitoring. Every year, you get an update on the graph. And, and so that money is built into our multi-year strategic pavement management plan. Now, you also know that for the last three, at least the last three years, requests of the state to put more money statewide into chapter ninety has been our number one, our number one legislative priority. So the state has about two hundred million dollars a year statewide that they issue through a, a capital bond. And that's the money that then flows through this formula that comes to the town of Northborough. And we've been asking for three hundred million dollars every year because in order for us to actually improve our overall ratings of our roadways, we need to be putting in more than one point one million dollars. But the bottom line here is that chapter ninety allotment that we get, we know we have it, it comes every year. It's paired up with the operating budget and the capital improvement plan in order to maintain our roadways. It's not some it's not a grant program that you apply for. It is a reimbursement program to the extent that we expend the funds and then the state reimburses for it, but it's all part of, again, a multi-year comprehensive pavement management plan that the town put in place about four or five years ago. So these funds are, I would say, they're, they're spoken for as part of this program. It's not just some grant program that you apply for and, you know, if you have a road and you apply for it and you get money from the state to, to fix a road, is all part of a comprehensive approach to maintaining our pavement throughout the town. I know the DPW Director in this next round, we've done an assessment of all of our sidewalks. And this upcoming cycle, we're doing a, basically a pavement condition index assessment of the sidewalks themselves because we have a lot of interest in sidewalks, in adding sidewalks. But we need to get a good handle on what we have currently, the shape they're in. Doesn't make sense to be bringing in and paving new sidewalks if we are having a difficult time funding and up and maintaining the sidewalks that we have. So it's probably more information than you wanted, but I just don't want people to think that this is chapter ninety grant program. It's a formulaic allotment that comes to the town every year that is part of a multi-year pavement management plan that we put forward every year for the town as a whole. And Scott's got a lot more detail through the chair, if, if you would let him.
Scott, please, please feel free.
Just a, a quick clarification of the chapter ninety process. In order for a municipality to spend chapter ninety funds, we request authorization from Mass DOT. Part of that authorization process is for us to submit the roadway we're working on, the limits of that roadway we're working on and what we're doing on that roadway. And they look through that list and they literally give it a little checkmark that that is a public way listed under the state's database as owned by the municipality. It has a sidewalk. The sidewalk is located within the public way. They then authorize you to expend those funds. There is no ability for chapter ninety to, I don't know, pave a, a, a walking trail in the woods or do a cut through to a neighboring community that's not a public way. It, it's, it's a very stringent review process of where the funds are spent and how they're spent. So the, the idea that one community can spend chapter ninety in another community, the Mass DOT does not allow it. They don't allow that.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. As I said, I understand there's some discussion in out in the public about chapter ninety potentially being a source of funding in relation to Bartlett Street. And I just want to be clear that we understand how that program actually works, how the funding's actually allocated and what the constraints might be, so that people don't have the wrong impression about how that might contribute. One other question we had had was about getting written responses from the neighboring communities about whether they would permit a truck exclusion, as we discussed at our last meeting, that permission to redirect traffic over non-state highways to an adjoining community is a requirement. The approval is a requirement in order for us to impose a truck exclusion. Can you give us just an update on the status of, of written response for that?
Scott, you want to take that? Since he's the one that made the request?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
So we sent a written, written request to our neighboring communities. This is specific to the Bartlett Street truck exclusion discussion. In order to exclude trucks from Bartlett Street, they need to have an alternate route. Those alternate routes would be going through neighboring communities, Westborough and Marlborough. We sent a written communication to Westborough requesting their opinion of accepting an alternate route for truck exclusions through their community. They very clearly said, no, they would not support that. We sent the same request to Marlborough. They said, no, but if you fix our road, we would be, we would consider talking about it. So I reached out to them and said, what exactly does that mean? Because that is not the type of response that I have ever seen from a neighboring community and I haven't heard a response yet because I don't think they know what they want really with their request, so.
Very good, okay. And thank you, thank you both for the additional information on those topics. And finally, under my report, last meeting, I had commented, we'd received a number of inquiries on several topics from the community. I had essentially forwarded my questions to town staff to provide some background or context or legal framework, et cetera, for some of those issues regarding the review process of the development projects at Bartlett Street and what role the Board of Selectmen had, if any. One was concerning the conflict of interest claim being made in relation to Mark Donahue's local resident and attorney's representation of the Gutierrez project. While also serving as a member of the Industrial Development Commission. Third item was truck exclusion, as we discussed and have just quickly touched upon for Bartlett Street. And the fourth one was the Citizen Advisory Board. A committee that has not been in operation for over thirty-five years and was defined in an era before we had professional town planner services and a town planner. Hello, I seem to have dropped out.
You're coming through now.
Everyone back? Was, was that just me? It was, of course it was, okay. So I'm not sure how far I have to backtrack, but I had mentioned that we talked, I made comments on the topic of the truck exclusion and then finally I had commented on the viability of the Citizen Advisory Board. A committee that has not been in operation for over thirty-five years predating in its definition, the professional town planning services within the municipal department. I just want to clarify that on each of those four topics, the gist of my comments, for the most part, was my inquiry to town staff and relaying the response that I had from town staff. To the extent that I was, appeared to be expressing my own personal opinion, I think for the most part, the information I was relaying was the response I had received from town staff on those topics. The board has not considered those topics. Specifically on the, the topic of conflict of interest. At the end of that discussion, I did make a statement, something to the effect of speaking on a personal note. I acknowledged Mr. Donahue's long service to the town and I suggested that the claims that had been made publicly with respect to conflict of interest law and the claim that he was in violation of it should be retracted. So that arguably, not arguably, that was my personal comment on that specific topic, so. Just want to clarify that. I did have an inquiry from one of our other board members asking me to make that clarification, so I'm happy to do that. And that concludes my report. John, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just a couple of quick updates. First of all, normally by now, I would come to you with a, with an update with our certified free cash and a preliminary free cash plan for the upcoming year. We, at this point, we don't have our free cash certified yet and frankly, it's going to be an interesting year given given the fact that our whole capital budget and approach got upended at the town meeting in July. So we're sort of reshuffling and working with departments now to kind of reprioritize projects, given the number of projects that were delayed in this last process. We are closed, we've closed fiscal twenty. We are typically Um we are closed, we've closed fiscal twenty. Uh we are typically the first uh one of the first communities to get our audit out of the way. Uh why is that important? Well, because uh after your meeting next uh uh November twenty-third, where we set the tax rate uh closing out fiscal twenty and having these data points all feeds into our financial trend monitoring presentation in December. Um we typically have some sense of what we might be looking at for fiscal twenty twenty-two state aid. We have absolutely no clue at this point in time. Uh and the reason why I'm mentioning all this is is basically everything is delayed by a couple of months. And that means we are will continue to work on our budget. Um but um you know, we can't produce data for you that we don't have. And we can't provide information to you that we don't have. And so everybody's gonna need to be patient that this next upcoming budget cycle is going to be further delayed um and more difficult. Um and the only other thing I want to mention is just stress to the board. And I know you know this, but it's important to state it publicly, is that uh in addition to the fiscal strengths and the distress that we are going to be feeling in the upcoming, at least to the upcoming fiscal twenty twenty-two budget. Um I just want to uh acknowledge the uh extra um burden that's been placed on the staff. I mean, you just heard about uh Kristen uh Black, our health agent, talking about all of this additional work that just didn't exist. Uh all the additional work, DPW, police, fire, the staff is doing, everything is in a remote uh environment at this point. Um a few meetings back, I just again mentioned to the board. Staff is really being overtaxed and uh we're at our limits. We're doing, we're doing okay. Um but again, I just want to acknowledge publicly that the workload is significantly higher right now. Uh the unknown uh pieces financially causes us to do twice as much work. I have to have twice as many meetings with the superintendent, twice as many meetings with the staff. You know, we will get through this. Uh again, I I you've you've known me, I've uh I've been here for seventeen years. I'm not gonna give you a doom and gloom. Uh we manage ourselves well and we positioned ourselves well. But it doesn't mean that it's not gonna take twice the work to get to the same place that we would normally get to last year or the year before. So I just want to acknowledge that publicly and again appreciate in advance your patience for why we're not gonna be on the same schedule that we've we've keep like clockwork for the last ten years. That's not gonna be the case this year. Uh the information's gonna come late, it's gonna be incomplete. We're gonna have to have multiple discussions over the same thing as things develop. And um that's just the nature of what we're doing. Uh but again, the staff is the staff is is doing phenomenally in my opinion. But I can tell you right now, the workload to be a health agent uh is twice what it was, you know, a year ago. Um for our finance director, Jason Little, is flat out. DPW is trying to do things like hang banners and and do all these other nice feel-good things which are great and important to the community. At the same time, you know, we don't have the staff, you know, that we've lost or the positions that we've left vacant like a facilities manager. Just means everybody has more work that they have to do. And I just, I just, it's important for the board to to understand and acknowledge that and um and realize that we are working twice as hard to get you the same result that we would normally be able to deliver under normal circumstances. And so just in advance, thank you for your consideration, thank you for your understanding, and thank you for your patience for a management team that in my opinion is doing a fantastic job, given the circumstances. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Uh I do want to say that uh in my frequent communications with John uh or other staff members, um the effort has been extraordinary. It has been a very difficult working environment. Um the demands are are excessive. Um and and the fact is, we have always run a very lean staff here in Northborough uh in comparison to a number of other communities um that some people might consider uh comparative communities, uh but uh when you start looking at departments and personnel and everything, you realize that uh we're uh we're doing, literally doing more with less, so um I certainly appreciate uh your comments, John, uh and the demands that have been placed on staff. You've got the people, a number of these people right here uh uh in this meeting, as I look around the grid here, so uh uh we certainly do appreciate all the effort uh that's being made. Um there is a limit. What we want to do is have our staff working to the best of their ability uh but not overtaxing themselves to the point where uh the quality of work degrades, right? So um uh uh to that end, uh uh you know, my statement as a member of this board is to prioritize the things that are necessary and we'll have to take a very close look at additional work uh as it presents itself and decide uh what we're capable of doing and what we're not capable of doing right away under these circumstances, so. Uh any other board members care to comment on that? Very good, hearing none. That concludes reports. Which brings us to public comment and uh just to review briefly, um public comment uh. If you are connected to the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand to make uh your indication that you would like to comment known. Public comment is restricted to three minutes. Uh when you're brought into public comment, uh we invite you to please first state your name and address. It certainly is helpful if uh the name on your Zoom uh uh connection is the person who wishes to speak. I will take the uh people in order as they're shown here on my uh attendee screen. And um just so that uh I can keep a reasonable track here um. The three minutes will begin after you've identified yourself, so. With that, uh the first first listed person is Abby Villa S C. I have no idea who that is. Uh when I bring you in, please identify yourself, name and uh address, please.
Hello, sorry, I signed in under the wrong account. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So my name is Janine Callahan. I live at Sixter Brook Lane. Um I just have a couple of questions in regards to um the Bartlett Street uh conversation. Um Amazon going in there. Can I get clarification on the?
Uh I'm sorry, I just want, I apologize for interrupting. I just want to clarify, as I usually do, I forgot this time. The board and town staff is receptive to questions, so we may not be able to answer those questions immediately at this time. And the board typically will not engage in discussion or deliberation of a topic that's presented in public comment um since it hasn't been advertised. Um I'm sorry for that interruption. Uh please, please continue.
So I just want to confirm uh the traffic study that was going to be done in the spring was on Collins and Maple, I believe that if that was correct.
Yes, I can ask our DPW director, Scott Sharpentier, would you clarify that, please?
We're gonna request um Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to help us by collecting uh traffic counts on Ridge Road and Maple Street, the segment of Maple Street between Ridge and Bartlett Street.
Okay, so there isn't, uh there is no traffic study that's going to be done or a traffic count that's gonna be done on Bartlett. Um even after Amazon um is confirmed as being our new tenant down the street. Um I'm wondering why that wasn't a consideration considering the traffic that is going to increase there. Now, I'm not talking about truck exclusions because I know that that's very difficult. Um and I know that you talked about, you know, speaking with Amazon and asking them to, you know, eliminate coming down those certain roads, but I'm wondering if a conversation has been had with them about trying to avoid Bartlett to get onto twenty to either make a left to go to two ninety or a right to go to four ninety-five because as you know, this has been a a a major concern for the residents and people around Algonquin of these eighteen-wheelers coming down Bartlett. I'm trying to get to these major highways when there's other routes. As Leslie had stated, you know, the truck from FedEx, I think you said, making a turn so that they can get to Hayes Memorial Drive, which makes more sense and backing up traffic in in downtown Northborough with eighteen-wheelers. Um so I'm curious as to why there's not gonna be a a traffic count on Bartlett because adding a hundred and fifty-two bays of of trucks on top of the FedEx and the Dewey pile that's already there is concerning. Um and I'm wondering, I know that, you know, somebody had made a comment that you know, you ha- you talk to these companies and they're more than willing and and able and and are willing to help, but uh there are still consistently trucks driving down these roads and I'm not, I'm not certain that they're really listening and and I'm really concerned about, again, a hundred and fifty-two bays of traffic coming down Bartlett. Um so.
Thirty uh thirty thirty seconds?
So anyway, I I those are our cons- that my concerns along with my neighbors. Um and I don't know if Amazon's a twenty-four-seven facility, but obviously that adds to the concern.
Uh very good, thank you for your comments. Uh next up, I have John Wickstead. Hi, John, do you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is John Wickstead. I live on Two Star Brook Lane. Um I have a few points to make. First of all, I'd like to thank the chief and Mr. Scott Sharpentier publicly for solving very expeditiously the parking situation on Bartlett Street. Their solution was both uh timely and effective, so thank you to both of them. Um second, as a as a leader in troop one oh one, we'll make sure that the website for our wreaths is posted on Facebook.
Facebook, thank you.
That'll happen tonight. Uh number three, I as um as Mrs. Callahan just stated, I I would also take some exception to the previous discussion. I believe uh and again, respectfully, I would do this. Um Tim commented that uh both Dewey Pile and FedEx have been responsive to the town's needs. Uh John Kudair stated that at uh when he spoke to Dewey Pile, the problem went away. And I would respectfully submit that the problem has not gone away. Frankly, the Amazon facility is seven times the size, literally seven times the size of the existing A Dewey Pile and FedEx buildings. If they are as responsive as A Dewey Pile and FedEx has been, we can expect seven times as much traffic and seven times as many eighteen-wheelers coming along Bartlett Street and going through the center of our town. Um I would suggest that rather than asking them to be responsive to this, that we require them to put up signs on their driveways directing to Route four ninety-five and to Route twenty, taking a right outside of their driveways and not a left. If we are fitting out the Amazon facility now, it's a perfect time to ask them to put up appropriate signage for their drivers. Lastly, I would make the point that you know, we saw with the facility that the Gutierrez company tried to put up on Parcel H that there is a very extensive design process that goes into these buildings. And yet, when the tenants move into the building, they're apparently allowed to completely disregard that design process. Amazon has not moved in and yet they have already put up portable generators which run all night long and huge halogen lights pointing directly onto Bartlett Street as well as a new temporary bil- building that they can use to screen the trucks moving in and out of their parking lot. None of that was on their original plan. And yet, the lights up there have already increased and they haven't even moved in yet. So I would like to ask the board to tell me who in town is responsible for ensuring that the design parameters that they agreed to when they built the building are actually adhered to and whether or not it's okay for them to willy-nilly put up new halogen lights and generators whenever they choose. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, John, and that was almost a precise three minutes, I have to say. That was very impressive. Is there a a a quick response as to the responsibility or authority um to look into that claim? Town staff, I don't know if anyone's prepared to.
I can address some of them.
Okay.
Um I I can address some. There is uh
Chief, yeah.
The uh portable trailer or structure that's at the end of the driveway, that is not Amazon's, that's the general contractor. Uh they are, that they're recording the construction vehicles that go in and out. Um that that's a temporary structure that'll be gone when they sign the rear building over uh from the general contractor to Amazon. Uh I did suggest directional signs uh across Bartlett Street at the end of the driveway, directing their vehicles to the right, either to uh Cedar Hill or to Hayes Memorial to four ninety-five to access two ninety. Uh they're not in full operation yet with vehicles. It's just going to be trailer trucks in the facilities in and out. It's a it's a sort center. It's not a fulfillment center with little blue trucks. It's just going to be tractor trailer trucks. Um the fulfillment center is being built over in Westbrook. Again, we're waiting for their uh community relations team to contact the town uh and start to deal with some of those issues. And I would like to say at this point in time that the drivers are not Amazon employees. Although they may say Amazon trailer, uh the the box trailers may say Amazon. The drivers are all independent or uh privately owned trucking companies. They, uh Amazon does not employ the the contract, uh the the drivers. So that does add a little bit of a sticking point to it, but um we did discuss how they can maybe get that message across when the with some special instructions on their bills of lading for the drivers to uh not to try to avoid Northboro Center. We can't make them avoid Northboro Center.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you, chief. Appreciate your your response. Uh next up, uh Suzie Sizilka. Hello, Suzie, can you uh give us your name and address, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Suzie Sizilka, eight Emerson Rowan. Um I'm gonna talk very fast because I have a lot to say in my three minutes. First of all, I want to thank Scott for the awesome shelf that was put up for the pumpkins. It was perfect. It withstand the snow and the the freezing rain and everything else. We were really worried about them rolling off and whatnot. They held up. It it was really great. First off, the um the advisory committee, the community advisory committee that hasn't been used for thirty-five years. I heard it spoken that it kind of overlapped with the master plan committee, so why have it? Because they were gonna have representatives at large from the public there. I did look into those openings, those openings. Um we asked the public to apply if they had like an architecture background, real estate or engineering. I myself thought about it, decided that my kids being home for standalone remote right now wouldn't be a good timing. But I'm I'm lucky enough to have those backgrounds. I have a real estate background. Um so I think the community advisory committee, I feel like people feel like they're not being heard. I have been writing to you guys about the Traffic Safety Committee since July first. And I've spoken with the chief several times about the crosswalks being put up, so thank you um for funding those. I think with a couple of crosswalks on one thirty-five, it is gonna change overall traffic patterns. However, the Traffic Safety Committee, I've been sitting in this meeting and seventy-five percent of it, when it's not thanking people, it's about traffic safety. Um a community advisory committee would could cover that. It wouldn't have to be two separate committees. There there's a pool of volunteers and residents that might not want to run for something like myself. I like being on committees. I like joining committees, planning fun, doing different things, volunteering for the PTO. I don't want to be elected. I mean, I applaud all of you. Thank you for running for the positions, but that's not what I want to do. But I would volunteer for a committee. I would research these grants. I would help with the different studies. I wa- I wanna help and there's no way to be able to help. Um people have heard me talking about traffic safety that I don't even know and they're now approaching me. They want to write petitions about different crosswalks and I've attended meetings now um with the Bartlett people. I didn't, I didn't want to do this. I just couldn't stop for a kid crossing the street. And um Jason, you wrote in the last email that you were gonna pers- personally contact me. You haven't. Um I did reach out to most of the board individually and I did speak with you about it, but um I also wanted to point out when you were talking about the business licenses, there I just, I had missed part of it. I don't know if my volume went out or not. Um the part about you, you can't when you were saying about you couldn't fund, I'm just asking for clarification because like my volume went out. You couldn't fund to help the businesses with, was that with like the CARE Act money or the grant money or when you were talking about um giving them the fifty percent discount? I just missed that part. I didn't, I didn't.
Yes, we can, we can try to clarify that, Suzie. Uh your time is up, uh but we will try to respond to a couple of the concerns you just expressed. John, can you speak to the uh funding assistance to businesses?
Yeah, I I I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I I I'm happy to do that. No, I just indicating that under the CARES Act, um. And I spoke about the uh funding that went flowed through the state, then from the state to the municipalities. Um, the town of Northboro received one point three million dollars of that. However, there's a lot of constraints on on what that can be spent on. In fact, it's very limiting. What we're finding is most communities. Um, I sit on the Mass Municipal Association's Fiscal Policy Committee. And one of the things that we did was hear back from all of the municipalities about how this was working for them. And essentially. With the exception of Chelsea, I think, nobody's been able to spend the money because it's so limited. I I just made the simple point that despite the fact that we have this this funding, uh, it, we can't use it to, uh, we can't. Use that money uh and provide uh assistance to businesses uh through that funding source. Uh, because the federal government, the constraints uh at the state level, so.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't, I couldn't hear that, that little, that part about the CARES Act. Um, I will even do as follow-up email because I did want to um let you know about it, something I heard from another Massachusetts committee, but. It wasn't with the CARES Act, so that I wanted to make sure that that was about it. Um, and that was pretty much it. I thought voting was great. I just want to thank you again for moving the central voting location to the middle school. Uh, as a parent of a couple of students, it used to horrify me and I would keep my children out of school on voting day. Because people could just walk into the school, so it's really worked out well. I myself voted at the senior center, so thank you, Andy. Um, and um, I think that was, I mean, I I think that was pretty much it before my three month, my three minutes is done, but the. Um, just thank you on the crosswalks on the one thirty-five North Gate. I saw a man running. Towards it to cross today and my heart just clenches because it's such a dangerous um spot, but thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Suzie. Um, you had mentioned uh. That I had not responded. I think uh you had a a couple of emails to the board back to back. I think I responded to the first one. I think in that one I indicated I would follow up on the traffic safety uh concerns that you had expressed, and I have not done that yet. Um, we have received that input and those suggestions. Um, I think as we've pointed out here, we have uh two committees uh kind of being launched at the moment. Um, we have staff who is overburdened. Um, it's not to pass judgment on that idea or to suggest it's a bad idea. Um, it's, there's just so much we can do realistically with the availability of of staff support. Uh, who are already overburdened and uh. Eh, anything that is a concern from a safety standpoint uh can always be communicated uh to the town. And uh handled by our public safety people uh at any time. For longer-term plans, uh, we will do our best, but we're operating under kind of constrained uh resource circumstances at the moment, so. Uh, we understand the concern. We appreciate the input. Um, and uh there isn't much more we can uh provide at this time. Uh, next up, Lisa Mocelli. Lisa? Uh, yes, can you state your name and address, please?
Lady thirteen Maple.
Uh, can you um, can you check your microphone, Lisa? It was coming across a little faint.
Thank, can you hear me all right now?
That's better, yes.
Okay, um, Lisa Mocelli, thirteen Maple Street, and uh thank you for uh letting me speak tonight. Um, I have a a lot of questions about what Scott had presented in the um truck restriction on Maple Street. Um, I'm holding paperwork in my hand. Um, on July eighth, I have a letter that was sent to the office from the DOT that um gave Maple Street. A uh an exclusion, not a portion, but Maple Street, and that was on July eighth. Um, there was a Board of Selectmen meeting on the fourteenth after that, uh, two thousand fourteen. There was no discussion, however. On August eleventh, two thousand fourteen, there was a presentation made by Fred Litchfield. Um, about the adoption of this because the process is that once you've made the application and the state has agreed. You still have to uh file for the permit. I've got all those docs. So um, and then this is where the question came in. On seven fifteen, he he has a. Presentation for um a portion of Maple Street. So all of a sudden, it's gone from a full to which we requested to a portion. So I'd like to know at some point, uh. How come that happened? Because we do have the full street already granted. And when the state grants a full, grants a truck restriction, they can't take it back. So I don't see that we have to really go and make any more um tests of the number of trucks. On that side of Maple, we have to find out why we went from a full to a uh to a half. Um, so and then there's other questions that I have when I hear. Um, I spoke to uh Scott and Fred in February about getting the red circle um with a line through it. Uh, signs on twenty, and we went through a great discussion on that. So um I followed up on August nineteenth. And on August nineteenth, I was told that they were going to be uh, that we're going to be ordering the signs. The signs were ordered on the third of September. I have emailed to this. And was told that they'd be in in two weeks, uh but wasn't sure when they'd be put up. And then I replaced, I re- uh reached out again on September twenty-fourth. And asked when they might be put up, but I haven't heard anything in reference to that. Now.
Thirty thirty seconds, Lisa.
In question to no other signs on Route twenty, Davis Street already has it, and now they have it on twenty. And I'd like to know how Davis Street was able to get a truck restriction in a year, and we've been doing this since two thousand and eleven. And we still can't get the right signage. So how does that happen? Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Sorry, timer issue. Um, next up, we have, uh, I'm sorry.
Can Scott speak to the Maple Street? Because there's some misinformation that's out there on that one.
Uh, yes, Scott, could you clarify that, please?
Yeah, I'll I'll be, I'll be brief as a chairman. Thank you. Um, so the signs that were requested are a, you know, symbol of the truck with a. Red circle on a line through it. We received those signs about a week and a half ago from Mass DOT. We haven't had the opportunity to install them. We do have them, though. The uh, the Davis Street signs that were uh installed in on. Uh, Route twenty to warn vehicles of the Davis Street truck exclusion were provided to us by Mass DOT. Because the truck exclusion is to a specified, a specific turning lane. Um, so that's just some clarification on the signage. Regarding the uh Maple Street truck exclusion letter, the submission, the the application to Mass DOT originally. Only wa- was requesting that segment of Maple Street from Route twenty to Ridge Road. The responsive letter from Mass DOT said you've met the criteria for Maple Street. Here you go. Here's the process. So they, Mass DOT failed to indicate it was a segment of Maple Street that was approved because all we submitted was a segment. So that was just a simple, you know, um, uh, letter that that Mass DOT sent out regarding Maple Street. There was no change of 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 direction or change in mind. We only submitted what was compliant and met the thresholds. We would not have submitted something that had one point two percent truck traffic because it would not be approved. So we submitted the two roadways, Collins and 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 Maple Street, the segment of, so just wanted to clarify it.
Uh, thank you very much for the clarification, Scott. Uh, next up, I have Carrie Martnek. Uh, hi, Carrie, can you state your name and address, please?
Sure, this is Carrie Martnek. I am at sixteen Hemlock Drive. I'm actually first calling as Chair of the Planning Board. Just to briefly speak to the memo that was submitted, um, I was really happy to see this on the agenda tonight. So thank you for the great discussion. Um, as most of you know, part of our job is to look at plans, project plans. To really take a look at pedestrian, bicycle and vehicular safety. Um, you know, I was glad to see that Scott had really outlined some great things to get us started. But in the meantime, you know, we'll continue to receive these applications through the winter and while the study's done. And we we still have these challenges that were outlined in the memo, just in terms of, you know, when we make conditions of approval for a project. If we don't have the enforcement there, the the conditions are not effective. Um, are we doing everything we can for mitigation for some of these big projects? And then a lot of times we see things that would help to improve a project, but they don't fall under our purview. So it'd be really helpful. If, you know, we could maybe communicate and collaborate more to figure out if we want to make these safe in the meantime. Or if we want to do things that help make projects safer in the meantime, is there a way we can just talk more, figure out how to support each other in that effort? Because I think we all share the same goal there. Um, uh, one thing that was, oh, Scott mentioned CMR PC, which is great. I'm really psyched to hear that they're getting involved. They also would be a great resource if we want to learn about what other communities in the region are doing. Especially those faced with Amazon in their own um, in their own regions. So that would be something um that that they could help with. And we have planning assistance hours that we'd be happy to uh make available if that's something of interest. Just really quickly, the other thing um that wasn't mentioned tonight, and we didn't reiterate it in the memo, was we did receive a lot of feedback. Primarily about the high school kids, a lot of concern about the high school kids on those roads, the new drivers. You know, more than just being an inconvenience, there was a real concern about the safety of those kids. So I I just wanted to make sure that was. Uh, I'm sure, no, it's not a mystery to anyone here. Um, just quickly, I'm gonna switch to a be a resident for a second. I was at um in-house coffee for uh between ten and eleven fifteen, and I saw thirteen FedEx trucks and eight, three A Dewey pile trucks go by. So I definitely think a friendly reminder would be in order, um, if that's something that we'd be able to do. So anyway, I really appreciate the conversation and thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Carrie. Appreciate the uh input. And I have next, Rachel Armstrong. Hello, Rachel.
Hi.
Dress, please.
Hi, it's Rachel Armstrong. I live on ten Hemlock Drive. Um, first of all, thank you for putting the um traffic issues that we're having on the agenda. I really appreciate it. Um, and I I wanted to reiterate what uh John Wickstead had said earlier about the Amazon facility. If we could make that a right turn, only out of there, I know Gutierrez in Zero Bartlett had talked about doing a left-tone turn only. On um when they're on the other side. So certainly if Amazon, FedEx and A Dewey Pile could do right tone early, only that would. Certainly help, I think, with the um, the trucks going by the high school and the residential neighborhoods. Um, the other thing that I wanted to say was a- also to thank the DPO, GPW for putting up the granite blockades. Um, so I, we did notice on Sunday morning, a truck on the side of the road on the shoulder on Bartlett Street. Who was there for a couple hours, probably resting as required by law. So I didn't know if there was a way to have Amazon or FedEx or any of those facilities have a couple of traffic spots. In their facility where the trucks can rest. I know that they're required by law to take a few hours off the road and. Certainly, I don't want to inhibit anyone doing that, but I'd appreciate them not doing it directly on Bartlett Street. Um, so I, I'd wanted to just make that request. And then my other question was regarding chapter ninety. Um, I I understand that it's a reimbursement program. I know that the chief of police in previous meetings had raised concerns about the condition of Cedar Hill Street. And that's only gonna get worse as as these trucks, um, you know, continue to hopefully make a right to go to four ninety-five. Um, you know, eventually school will be in session and the Southboro kids will be driving that road a lot, hopefully. Um, so, you know, my concern was the condition of that road is only gonna get worse, and I know it's not our town, it's Marlboro. But I didn't know if there was anything that Northboro and Southboro could do to improve the condition of that road. That was it.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Appreciate your uh, your input.
Thank you.
Uh, any, any quick response uh uh in regard to that last uh query on Cedar Hill Street?
There's only about seven hundred feet of Cedar Hill up there. That's the town of Northbrows. It's a very small segment. When we have small sections of road, we tend to, uh, uh, from the public works perspective, bundle it up with other work in the area. Um, just to save mobilization expenses, so that's, that's one of our goals. If we were to go up there and do other Bartlett, you do Cedar Hill at the same time.
Understood, yeah. Uh, thank you very much. Um. I only see a couple, couple or three other uh. Attendees, uh, none of whom has their hand up. If anyone would like to raise their hand, going once. Going twice. And public comment is concluded. Thank you all for your input. Uh, new business, uh, first item is interview subcommittee recommendations for appointment to the diversity and inclusion committee. And uh Leslie and Tim, which of you would like to lead that? Leslie?
Is that okay, Tim? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, uh, we had, um, it's interesting because we had originally wanted to uh. Have a committee going a little bit earlier, but we had so many applicants that we thought it'd be best to spread out the interviews. Over a three-week period and interview six people each time. It was just too many people and uh we didn't want to shortchange people. And and uh not be able to remember anyone at the end of it, so. I think it was more effective to have this done over a longer period of time and interview all those individuals. And everybody we interviewed was wonderful. I do want to, I do want to say that. And to anybody who isn't selected, I would please, please urge you to look at the town website and look at the openings. That are there for different committees and please um apply for one of those. There's so many talented people in town. With so many uh wonderful backgrounds, and I just can't urge that more. And it's unfortunate that we can only take five people out of the eighteen, and it was very difficult. Um, I would like to publicly thank the following people for um applying for this, and these are the people that we interviewed, uh, Tim and I. Uh, Gene Cahill, Valeria Schmidt, George Brankel, Mary Leach. Miriam Ibrahimee, Michaela Anunziata, Wenisa Tran, LaShica Holland. Sherry Clark, Deidra Writing, David Lorenzi, Cormac McManus. Vikram Verma, Jennifer Graham, Jocelyn Earhart, Annalise Cora. Hamilton Soriano and Kalen Hines. So again, thank you to everyone, and uh we really urge you to continue on and 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 hopefully be interested in some other things in town here. So with that, um, I have a motion after much thought and note-taking. Um, for um the following individuals. I move the board vote to appoint LaShica Holland, Deidra Writing, Miriam Ibrahimee. Hamilton Soriano and Mary Leach to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee each for a twelve-month term. As recommended by the interview subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Leslie Rutan, seconded by Scott Rogers. Uh, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Um, this will be a roll call vote. Uh, Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Uh, Leslie Rutan. Tim Kalen.
Aye.
And I will also vote aye, so that carries unanimously and. To repeat, that's LaShica Holland, Deidra Writing, Miriam Ibrahimee, Hamilton Soriano. And Mary Leach as the five representatives on the um Diversity Inclusion Committee. I just want to add my thanks to all of the applicants. Uh. Um, they certainly provided a very diverse representation. And I can imagine the difficulty that uh Leslie and Tim had trying to go through uh all of those applicants and and trying to. Uh, try to find what they would consider to be the the best combination or composition from among the available applicants. I also want to thank uh some number of the applicants who uh. Um, in addition to their interest, also indicated that they would be willing to withdraw or step back if. The 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 interviewers felt uh that uh there were other applicants that would provide a more diverse representation, so. I can imagine that um while they would have been excellent contributing members themselves, their willingness to step back was uh. Some assistance in 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 coming to the uh, the final selections, so. Uh, thank you all very much. Uh, Tim, you are the uh Selectman's representative. For the Diversity Inclusion Committee. Do you have any comments about the next steps uh for what will take place?
Um, I think the next steps is probably reaching out to Becca and having a conversation with her about determining a day and time that works and reaching out to the people that have been selected. I believe they need to reach out to Andy Dowd. Is that correct, John?
Uh, yeah, that would get sworn in. So those folks, once their appointment, when they get their appointment letter indicate to them that they need to be sworn in by the town clerk, they need to get training on open meeting law, public records and conflict of interest, as all appointments do. And then what I would assume is get together, working with Becca to coordinate an initial meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, perfect. Thank you, John.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much, Leslie and Tim. That certainly was a very large undertaking to go through all of the applicants and conduct the interviews. It was really quite a bit of work, so thank, thank you to both of you for carrying that out. Now you get to relax with the Master Plan Implementation Committee interviews. Right, right. Uh, next item is Approval Execution of Plowing and Treatment Agreements for Private Ways for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one winter season. Scott Charpentier, would you care to inform us?
Yes, we've received all the agreements back from the two private ways, Maple Lane and Harris Ave, so they are done and you have the the two agreements.
And there's a basically a representative of these private ways who signs on behalf of the neighborhood, but all of the participants are collectively.
Yeah, we 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 receive a an agreement from each participant who funnels it through to the liaison, and that liaison is our point of contact for communication and billing to the neighborhoods. And we've received everything from the two liaisons.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve and execute the plowing and treatment agreements for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one winter season for Harris Avenue and Maple Lane.
Second.
Uh, motion by Julian Hirsch, seconded by Scott Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Tim Kalen?
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, also vote aye, unanimous approval of the Plowing and Treatment Agreements for Private Ways. So thank you very much. Thank you, Scott, for handling that also as well. Uh, next item, Execution of Cemetery Deeds, one one zero four, one one zero five and one one zero six. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, vote to, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds one one zero four, one one zero five and one one zero six.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rutan. Any discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Tim Kalen?
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, also vote aye. Approval of Cemetery Deeds carries. Uh, any other business come before the board, John?
No other business this evening.
Okay, Julian, you have something?
Well, based on the public comments that we've heard tonight and the fact that we've never really had a board, a full board discussion about the Traffic Safety Committee, I would I would like to request that we have a discussion about it at an upcoming, at a future meeting. I and I just want to say I understand the constraints that town staff is under right now and but simultaneously, the the industrial area is not is not waiting or wait, you know, waiting for COVID to be settled and all of the other things. So I think it's imperative that we discuss this sooner rather than later, and I think a Traffic Safety Committee is is worth having a conversation about. So that's my request for right now.
Okay, thank you very much, Julian.
You're welcome.
If there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair.
I can't do it, so somebody's got to do it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I I would move to vote to adjourn.
Uh, moved by Scott Rogers. I'm going to grant the second to Julian Hirsch. And this is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan? Tim Kalen?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The meeting is adjourned. I want to thank all the members and staff for being here this evening and contributing your expertise. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.